Started. And listen while these dishes. Our first utility rate study and update, and that's.
We are going to.
What?
We're gonna switch.
Oh.
I just learned this.
Well, you didn't have a chance.
Oh, you just did it.
Like mine is gonna be super short and.
Oh, yes, yours is very short.
I'm thinking of all the time, yeah.
Yeah, right, exactly. And then you'll know exactly how much time you have.
Exactly.
All right. Okay, we're gonna look at peddler permit discussion.
So, thank you, Mayor. This item is being brought before you because over the last several years, we have had a lot of trouble with peddling in the downtown for during festivals and holidays. Um, currently in our code, we allow peddling with a permit in residential zones only. So what is happening is folks are obtaining a peddling permit. They're allowed to go in a certain zone in like the multi-family zones that are both commercial zones. And then as soon as they have that permit in hand and nobody's watching, they go downtown. Um, and we don't have a ton of teeth right now. We tell them to go away and then we leave and they come back on the weekends, especially when staff's not here to enforce that. It makes it challenging. It's also, I mean, we get complaints from businesses downtown, even people on the residential streets. I mean, don't really like it there. Um, so I, you know, working with legal, um, we, we do have the ability to remove peddling completely from this. Um, and so the graph I have before you is not perfect. Um, there are still some redundancies and things that need to be fixed, but the goal is to just not allow peddling at all. Um, so then we wouldn't be issuing those permits in the residential zones. And if they're caught down there, they don't have. We just make them leave. Uh, we talked with the sheriff's department and they are, I understand onboard, helping us out to move them on their way. Um, but it will take some time to develop a system for the civil penalties, um, writing tickets and issuing those specific citations then and there. Um, it's something we have to work with the county prosecuting attorney on. And so that can require a little more work and won't happen this season, unfortunately, but we're hoping to get this code passed so that we can avoid having to issue these pedals. That's kind of the general concept and I'm here if there's questions or thoughts or.
Maggie, do you?
Oh, sorry, Shane.
No, go ahead. No, go ahead.
Do you know the history on why we originally allowed peddling in the residential districts? It seems like a very odd thing for us to have in our code.
It seems really rare. And I, I went back to look at code and there was busking and all, all these other things that were in it. Um, I don't know if it's just like the, it's like your standard door-to-door salesman.
Right, that's what it is. It's part of the selling the old encyclopedia sales.
Yeah.
Back to the.
The regular, the.
Back to the.
Okay.
Yeah, whatever.
Okay, so it's just a older generational sort of.
And code piece.
But we, we did use it about 10 years ago, several times. So we had local folks that worked in the downtown that they wanted to. I, I can recall the one gentleman who had the music box and he walked around with his music box. And he wasn't really peddling. He wasn't asking for money, but he had to have some sort of license and the peddling license took him up. So.
So. Yeah, so this one, I mean, with definitions, it's definitely like selling goods and wares. Uh, so, and I think we took out the busking and talking out of the code because it's a free speech issue. Um, and so that was removed, but this was kept in. I personally have issued maybe three or four peddler permits in the last five years. And, um, most of those are the ones that have been problematic. There was one that was like a student that was selling books over the summer from out of town. They're, they're usually not locals.
That was, that was gonna be my question, like.
I haven't had.
Are these local businesses or?
Yeah, no.
Okay.
So. Another just kind of clarifying the question. The neighbor kids in, the kids in my neighborhood, often there's like school sales, they're selling seeds or books or something like that. Is this also gonna fall under peddling for like some sort of school fundraiser?
I don't think so.
Yeah, like Girl Scout cookies.
I wouldn't premise that, but I also just don't want to.
Or the Kodiak cards, they don't get a permit anyway.
Well, let me, yes.
Well, of course, the team, the like middle schoolers are not gonna get a peddling permit, but I'm, you know, how are we really looking at those sorts of things?
I mean, we aren't.
Yeah.
Guys, here's the danger in the slippery slope of that, and it's not now, and it may be in five years, maybe in 10 years, when in where I, in Arizona, there was a time where magazine sales in urban areas, they would, they, they, they would fan in these kids from inner city and they would go door-to-door and sell magazines, right? Yeah, and it would, they're, they're kind of expensive and they would take, you know, it was a thing. And I had someone come to the door and hey, I'm selling magazines, uh, I'm privileged, da-da-da, I'm like, you know, from inner city, whatever. And I said, really, I was outside washing my car and I said, hey man, I'd rather give you 20 bucks than like buy a magazine. You're gonna get more of it. And he got really combative. It was really weird to me. It was like this really aggressive kind of magnet. That's this culture that's out there. So when people see, oh, the average price of a home in Level 1, which is a million dollars, a wealthy neighborhood, let's take our group from Seattle and drop them off for a weekend and go door-to-door aggressively sell magazines. I mean, this, this, it's out there and we don't have an experience with it. And that's one of those funny little things that is out there. And that's the way the kids go into door-to-door, which they still do in Level 1, which is great, because I did that, selling chocolates for, I've got my baseball mitt, I sold raffle tickets and that, we did that. There's less door-to-door nowadays. There's more in a nice, safe city like Level 1, which is great. Um, but that's the only, I'm just putting it out there that it's just one of those, those things that may fit somewhere in between this or what that may protect the past sort of.
So that hasn't come up. I mean, as far as kids, like I, I've never been asked to get a or had complaints about kids going to sell things for school. I would put something in here about nonprofits or.
Then they'll just, they'll just make a nonprofit to sell the.
Yeah.
But I mean, those folks don't have to get a business license, so then the.
I know. Yeah.
We don't enforce lemonade stands, although they're probably contrary to code.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure. Yep, I do buy lemonade.
Um, what about, um, churches? That are inviting you, you to go to their religion? Is that?
That, this is more people that are carrying their wares, they're selling things door-to-door. So there's no sale or exchange of money or anything like that. It wouldn't be considered peddling.
From, from my perspective, and I'm just speaking as a resident, I don't want anybody coming to my house, don't want my door. I don't want anybody coming to my house and knocking on my door for any reason.
Yeah.
I am a private person. When I'm inside my house, I'm inside my house. I don't want to come to the door. And I don't.
It doesn't keep people from trying.
It doesn't. I did, and I have had one person peddling spec, peddling. I did have Spectrum come to try to set me internet within the first couple of weeks of me being in there.
Is that peddling?
It is.
Okay.
Soliciting.
Well, you know, I've watched probably too many, uh, shoot him up shoulder. And so if someone came.
Crime shows.
Yeah, and I don't want to be shot.
Well, it gives a target, you become a target, right? You answer the door and it's, it's someone your age and it's like, oh, you live here alone? Right? You don't want any, it's a privacy.
Yeah.
We want to protect our residents.
So, do those places, don't those uh, peddlers, let's say, come around, come to City Hall and say, can we pedal in the, do they come and ask or they just go?
They come get a permit. We have conditions that say these are the only areas you can be in, because they're not allowed to be in commercial zones, presidential only. But then what happens is as soon as they get that permit in hand and nobody's around on the evenings and weekends, they go downtown and then they're competing with our local businesses and they're selling $1 balloons for $20.
So that's gonna happen, that happens during.
During festivals.
Festivals, right? The roses, the neon stuff.
Yeah.
These are all.
Mostly, that's.
They're not permitted.
Yeah, they're showing what frustrates, they're selling them, yeah.
Breath. It's mostly Christians. And that's why we want, wanted to get it.
Yes. And what, what was happening last year was Amy was going down and confronting them and telling them to come in and get a peddler's permit. So I had at least two meetings last year with, um, with people who were getting peddlers for this, explaining to them where they could set up shop according to our code. But they don't, they don't abide by it. So this was something that I asked from Maggie to put together. Um, because I think that it's much stronger if we just tell them it's not allowed in the city, like, if in the city law or full stop.
Yeah.
But we were dealing with people who were down there peddling even without a permit.
We were.
And then they would come in and get a permit, but then they still.
But they.
No, why would they have restrictions?
Does this out, this doesn't outline the, the fine, right?
Now, that, that was where there was a little gray area and talking with legal and then the sheriff, it looks like a civil penalty is the way to go. We can fine, I believe, up to $250. And here it says per day, but I would like it to say per occurrence. Because what happens is if we issue them a ticket and it's 250 bucks and they come back later in the day and we catch them again, I don't want it to be a per day issue. And for.
You know, you know, or if you ask the sheriff, is this? So if you, if the sheriff comes and you're getting trespassed, the hotel says, hey, this guy's hanging out in our lobby, he needs to go. Sorry, you need to leave. Right? The owner said leave. And that person comes back, the sheriff comes back the second time, they're trespassed and it's a bigger deal, almost like detained. Is that? You know, if that's the extent of this, or this is gonna be a little different. We don't want people to go to jail, right? Civil penalties, but like trespassing means something different. I want to make sure that it's not.
Yeah.
Trespass.
No, this is more like, I mean, public state, but they're doing something that's not.
Okay.
So it's, it's.
Home space is different than like private trespass.
No, trespass people from this building.
I suppose same, best is trespass, private for government.
But that's, but that's a different, it's not a civil matter, that's a legal matter. And we're trying to just do fines.
Civil, yeah.
I will, basically I'll build in the violations to what's allowed in state law.
Duh, so they need a permit, they'll know.
Yes, and I love to build it up, so each, if it's a recurring thing, maybe the penalties go higher, but I think the most we can find is 250.
Per occurrence.
For occurrence.
So yeah, example on the permit is like, okay, three times in one day, that's a $750, like have that big number in there, right? Yeah, which is.
Does that make it hit a little harder than just what we're doing now, which is?
And, and, and again, the goal is, you're probably not gonna see that money. What you're, what you'll see is hopefully they'll leave, right? They'll say, we're not gonna stick around because.
It's not a moneymaker.
No, no.
No.
It's not about making the money.
We just want, we just want the practice to cease.
Yes.
And once we enforce it this year, if you guys are amenable to this code change, word will get out to this. There's a community of people that do this kind of peddling.
Hmm, yeah.
And word will get out and they'll stop.
Yeah.
Last year, when I was in Safeway during Christmas lighting, they were out there with the balloons. I just mentioned to manager. They weren't out there again.
Hmm.
It must have a bigger club.
Hmm, well, yeah, there are private property there.
Even on private property, they would need a transient business license and it has to be related to, anyway, there's a lot of code in there, so I don't think they'd be able to do it there. But if, I guess.
Go forward.
Thoughts? Move forward with legal and that. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Maggie.
All right. Now we've got the rest of our time to look at the utility rate study.
Awesome.
Good.
I'm not sharing experiences, I can. Work very. All right, so as you know, Kevin came and started the conversation about the utility rate study. And after that presentation, we realized as a team, we want to paint a bigger picture for you. Uh, Kevin is fantastic with all the data. And also, we wanted to give some background information as to why these numbers really are necessary. Uh, so to start with, I do really want to emphasize this is funding the future of our community. This is a lot more than just simply increasing rates. This is really determining what the city is going to look like moving forward. Uh, and right now, we're at a really cool time where there is a lot of funding available for these types of projects that we can really overhaul our structure. So to set the groundwork for this, I know there was a lot of work that went into the city's mission vision values. Oh goodness, I didn't know that. This was gonna make me quick, please, one. Uh, as I goes through. As, uh, most of you were involved in that process, so you're very familiar with the city's mission vision values, but I did just want to share them here as a framework for this conversation. Uh, so the city's mission, we deliver quality essential services while balancing the diverse needs of residents, businesses, visitors and neighbors by using inclusive decision-making and seeking collaborative solutions. Uh, and then our vision, we strive to nurture our vibrant community and uncommon economic opportunities in a way that honors our human and natural resources responsibly, equitably and sustainably. And so I think that's really critical as we look at our utility rate study. This is something that impacts everyone in the community. It impacts our residents, it impacts our businesses. And ultimately, it drives how we're be, how we're going to be able to make investments in our city. Um, one of the other components that I'll get into too is the stewardship piece in particular. Um, so as part of this, we are looking at, in hurting conservation. And so again, I just want, I just want to set the groundwork. This is ultimately what we're trying to do through this utility rate study is just frame our future together. Uh, and really determine how we can change the city. So right now, you're all quite aware, um, but the biggest goal of public works is shifting from a reactive culture to proactive. Uh, and really, you know, the path in order to get there, one of the little big things that we need to do is make capital investments. Uh, so not only is that capital projects, but that's also various capital purchases that we need in order to have the equipment on hand to do the work we need to do. Uh, I put under exemplify stewardship. I think this is really critical, especially with where we are right now on the landscape of fires. Uh, and then just looking at our natural resources and how our water system directly impacts the environment around this. Uh, not only does it directly influence the ice level creep right now, uh, but also looking at how that plays into, uh, like managing our landscapes and having fire flow variability, all those types of things. And then the last thing we put up here was building community trust. So it's brought to my attention that, uh, this is some of the conversation that was had in some of the, at least the first vision session was community wants to see investment, uh, in infrastructure and investments in the community as a whole. And so I think together, again, the utility rate study is really the driver behind this that's just giving us the data to understand what we can do moving the city forward. So high level, I know Kevin touched on this, but I just kind of want to reiterate some of the things he, he talked about. Um, the scope of the utility rate study was specifically looking at our water, sanitary sewers, stormwater and solid waste rates. And so obviously there's a ton of background data that went into that. Uh, and then also, as Kevin mentioned, you know, following all, all the different protocol that I couldn't pretend to be an expert on, but that's what we do. Uh, the main piece I am gonna talk about tonight is water. But I am gonna high level touch on all the rest of these, just to give you some exposure for a rat. And again, this is a work in progress. This is currently in draft form. Um, and really the goal tonight is just to expose you to the bigger picture of why these high rate increases are super necessary. Uh, and then also just to help lay the groundwork. So when Kevin comes in and gets more into the weeds in this presentation, you have the background information. So feel free to interrupt me as I move on. I'm sure there'll be some questions. So big picture, the goals of this utility rate study were really the first one being to provide revenue stability. So, uh, again, all, all three of these are super important, but provide revenue stability, fund capital improvements and operation and maintenance. And then incentivize conservation. And this is true across all utilities. It actually is more than just our water. When I originally put this together, I was thinking about the conservation piece just in terms of water. Um, but even solid waste, this is really pregnant. We're looking at ways that we can encourage people, uh, to not have the garbage collection on weekend, because that requires that we have more staff on call seven days a week. Um, it's just more demand on our system. And also, we can't haul cardboard on weekends, so we end up having to have additional equipment on hand in order to, um, hold that cardboard until we can haul them up. So there's, there's a lot of things that go into this, but it really is just encouraging conservation across the board more than just in our water system. Um, as far as the revenue stability, Chantel can happily add on, add on more to this, but really what we're looking at here is no matter who the user is and how much they're using, if we have plans that are made by them. So what we're currently looking at in the water, for example, is, and I'll get into this in more detail, but, but we have a base rate and then we also have a usage fee. Um, and similar in our, in our sewer, um, not the usage fee itself, but just, but just having a standard rate where if someone's connected to our system, they are being charged. And so really what we're needing to balance here is uh, incentivizing that conservation while also allowing us to have sufficient income and an anticipated income such that we can budget and you know, have, have a functioning, uh, budget year over year. So there's, I kind of see it as this scale with these three components that we're really trying to balance as we look at our rates here. Uh, so about the money, I know there's a lot of numbers up here, but I do want to start high level and just give you an overview of what's going on. Again, all of this is in very draft form and this is not exactly as we're proposing right now, but this is just the base information we have, uh, from Kevin's data. So the blue, well, this graph in general is looking at the consumption of an average single-family home. And this is specifically on the water side. Um, so right now, it shows that the average user is paying $81.75 per month on their water bill. Oh, I think I'm good. Thank you.
I'm just like, okay, thank you, okay.
Um.
I'll be good to you.
So for a laser pointer, in case you want to point.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, I thought you just click myself, okay.
In case you want to point at things for the.
How do I?
You should push the green button.
Ah, okay, yeah. Uh, this, thank you. This blue, uh, is that average rate. So then, green is the.
We did that, right?
Minimum. And so I went through essentially all the components that Kevin has pulled into this are from various adopted plans. And so this includes our capital improvement plan. Uh, this includes our, uh, our water system plan. And, and, and any other published documents that we have that touch upon this system. Uh, so that holds in all of the priorities most. Now, obviously, if we're looking at the most, um, purely cost-effective projects, there are certain ones that we would say are absolute bare minimum must happen. And there's other ones that I'm calling recommended. I do want to be super explicit in this. The things that we call minimum where the absolute bare bones must happen, this is still not addressing any of our bigger system issues. This is purely projects that we have on the books right now, or things that our system, uh, will absolutely fail if we don't have. Things that are recommended are still not necessarily very glamorous projects. These are still things that are absolutely necessary in order to have a reliable system. But we could limp our way through and continue to have catastrophic failures if we don't do what we're calling the recommended. So the terminology that we use here is a little bit confusing, but I do really want to emphasize, these are all things that are in our adopted plans that aren't really necessary for our system.
What did, hey, what did this slide look like five years ago, leading up to 2024? Like, is, I'm trying to figure out, is 2024, is this the recommended or is this the bare minimum by 2024 as you look at the slide previous to this? Like, where are we at?
You know that I can't speak to, and I don't know, Chantel, if, if you could hop in.
I mean, it's just like all of a sudden, we like rely on it, oh boy, we should take a hard look at this.
No. It could very well have looked like this back then. Without a doubt.
And so where's 2024 hit from back then? And what decisions were made for?
I'm just saying, all that orange, which is the recommended.
Yeah.
All existed five years ago too. House councils have chosen to limit increases.
Okay.
To limit the impacts for various reasons. There were recessions, there was COVID.
Yeah.
So you've had all these different things that have played in that you, as the policymakers, have to decide on. Are we comfortable with a 3% increase or a 5% increase? Okay, this is a 17, 15, 15, 14% increase year after year after year in order to build up reserves and get some of these very long-term things that are out there failing.
Yeah, I mean, hard decisions in hard times, it's, I mean, there's hard realities, right? It's like, I know there was recessions, but also infrastructure. And so I feel like more, and I'm newish to town. I feel like it's coming up a lot.
I couldn't.
With, with the building, infrastructure, infrastructure, infrastructure. Have we been, have we been raising the flag of infrastructure needs five years prior to this? And maybe yes. But we haven't really done anything about it, it sounds like.
So.
Money-wise, policy-wise.
So let's do it this way too. Keep this in the back of your mind. What has happened in the last four years, it wasn't happening five years ago. An exceptional amount of growth. An exceptional increase on all of our infrastructure systems. So.
Okay.
We're, the, the pipes aren't big enough in water to get the fire flowing.
So this is right, this is what I'm saying. So this didn't quite look like this five years ago. That's what I'm saying, this graph leading up with wasn't this extreme and we just ignored. Okay, so this is fine, you're right. I see what you're saying. Now we're planning for this.
Thank you.
But, but there were pieces that were were in need and were ignored. And that's the reality. I mean, we, we've, we've got pipes that were too, way too small and they've been there for a long, long time. So we just have not chosen to raise them enough to address those. And so now, now we've got greater needs, right? Because we've got transmission lines that gotta be, you know, um, upsized and.
Yeah.
We've got bigger needs, but the needs have there have always been unmet needs in the system that we didn't plan for.
And one thing I really want to add on to that too is with the age of our infrastructure, we're really at this critical tipping point where things are failing. I mean, to be fair, it's Tuesday, we have two water main leaks this week already.
Yeah.
Like, it, it's really substantial and we're not alone in that. Um, across Washington, other municipalities that have similar age systems to ours. Like, our system was initially built in the sixties. We've just reached the design length of a lot of components. So adding on to what everyone shared here, yes, we do have mains that need to be replaced. Those mains also have to be replaced because there's failing even without capacity concerns.
Yeah.
So there's a lot of components going on here, but.
Yeah, this is great. This paints this picture. I will last question, I promise you.
No, you have it.
I'm curious, uh, the, the housing trend in Level 1, right? We've had this explosion, right? We, we know that it doesn't, it, that curve, that line doesn't go exponentially. We're not gonna have this growth. In fact, we're flattening out. In fact, I think we're going down a little bit in Level 1. So these are some realities. So we assume growth is not gonna be where it is, it'll flatten out. Do these numbers in the, in the orange take that into consideration or what are those based on? We need this many dollars, we're gonna assume this huge growth still, or this is like?
This is not.
Just dollars, not based on that.
This, this is not assuming huge growth in the city. And so the water system plan has to go through review by Department of Ecology and get approved by them and then also the correspondence, uh, or correlation with what community development is forecasting as far as growth. So these are, by no means outrageous numbers.
Yeah.
It's all like approved, uh, adopted documents that these projects are all forecasted out of.
Yeah.
Um, as far as the growth, there's one that I'm not talking about tonight, but the system development charge is another piece of our water rates. So when someone connects onto our water system, they have to pay a fee upfront. And ultimately, that piece, as Kevin explained it to me, is the piece that he correlates to growth and to development. So when he gave me the project list, I went through and identified what the driver is for all these projects and which components are actually being driven by development. And so the development piece itself factors into how he dictates and calculates the system development charges.
Yeah.
This is just being a water user, this is your contribution. So, again, it is separate from development, but that's still what they did.
That would be, yeah.
Yeah.
It makes sense.
Um, but again, we really are not alone in this. There's a lot of other communities that are facing really substantial issues because we have the same aging infrastructure. Uh, we have a, a lead service line inventory that's due to the EPA and it's really interesting in going through that. I've been through all sorts of old documentation from our system. And the sixties and seventies, we had, I mean, we had like I want to say 50, 60 water connections per year. It was a really aggressive time. And now that infrastructure is getting really old. Like, we ha, we have exceeded the useful life of the materials they put in the ground there.
Yeah.
Um, so yeah, as the mayor indicated, we we're having a lot of issues.
Yeah. What?
There's a lot of challenges.
Are, what percentage of our pipes generally need to be bigger? All, like a lot of them, a majority of them?
Well, that's where we do.
Besides cracking and besides.
Yeah, that, that is where we look at those strategically determines, like our transmission mains are the most critical. Those are the things, um, that are bringing the water from our sources, from our well field and from, uh, from our water treatment plant into town. And so those are like first and foremost, the most critical pieces in order to convey water. We also have mains that are undersized throughout town, uh, just from like a standards standpoint, but. But those things we can. We can delay replacement just due to the sort of nature of them. When we go in to replace them because they're failing, then we're gonna upsize. But we wouldn't necessarily just go into, um, say, like a dead end neighborhood line. Unless there's a driver that we need to replace that line.
Going in.
Until it's failing from material versus just the size.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Uh. So. I know lots of information. Please be best in questions. Uh. So again, this blue is the minimum. And so this is saying that in twenty twenty five, we would increase. An average single family homes rate by two dollars and forty five cents. Or increased by three percent.
So per month, right?
If we're doing minimum.
We're just doing the.
Per per month, Andy?
Per month, yeah, yeah, per month. Um, and then the recommended. This first year in the graph, it's seventeen percent. And and that would increase, um. You know, this, I can't do much about it. Well, a total of uh thirteen dollars and. Whatever that is, eighty nine cents. If we have the minimum and the recommended that are being added.
So.
So that's the green and the the orange together. That would be an.
So you're saying that would the? The user rate would go up thirteen dollars more per month?
Correct.
So we combine the green. Right, to the base rate, right?
Right.
Uh, sorry, I I guess I floundered. This isn't necessarily the base rate. This is not the base rate. This is based off their average bill right now.
Okay, okay.
I think our base rate is like seventy seven.
Yeah, it's a little lower than that. So this is the entire system average.
Okay.
Uh.
Does that include commercial use or is this just residential?
We're only showing residential right now. Uh. So again, there are large increases that we're showing. Some of them, so you'll see like twenty twenty five seventeen percent, twenty twenty six fifteen percent. Fifteen percent in twenty twenty seven, fourteen percent twenty twenty eight. But then we level off, twenty twenty nine through twenty thirty two, we're showing two percent. And some of that is that we have projects right now that we need to be able to have the cash on hand. In order to pay the debt service. So for example, uh, we just received a really low interest rate for the Isicle Road Transmission Pay. And we're gonna start having debt service payments in twenty twenty six. Twenty twenty six. Uh. So those are the types of things. We already have the works that we need to be able to have sufficient cash on hand in order to start making those debt service payments. So there's, there's a lot going on.
So then there's, I mean, is there a margin of error as far as? People will see this and feel it in the. Twenty twenty five and. Be more. Conscious and conservative, and they'll use less water consumption, right? This will go down, or is this all taken into consideration?
No, I will get into that because for now, I just wanted to paint a a high level picture of what this looks like and how it impacts people. Um. But you're right, it will impact. People differently depending on water usage. But pause on that. I I will.
Yeah, cool. The goal will be the lowest users will, it'll impact less.
Less.
That's correct.
Um. So again, this, the minimum versus recommended. Uh, your minimum is nine point four million dollars in capital investment. The recommended is seven. And if you wanna just high level show you what we're looking at for the other utilities, they're not all as aggressive with water, and then come back to the specifics of the water rates.
And just to add. This is actually something that. This council, previous councils, have been looking at over the last decade.
Mm hmm.
And I know in my mind that the water debt from previous loans started dropping off in twenty twenty four. And continues to drop off to twenty twenty six. So timing wise, we're dropping debt but adding debt. Unfortunately, the debt, new debt, is more expensive than the old debt.
Inflation.
So this is sewer. Oh, I'm sorry. I left some some extra information on here. Uh. So minimum. We're looking at two point eight million dollars needed for this sewer pump. Uh, if we're just doing that minimum. And again, Kevin put this detail in here, but this was us specifically saying we're not gonna borrow anything beyond twenty twenty four. So that was really uh. Just having. Cash on hand in order to do replace smaller, smaller replacement products as they come on. Uh. If we go with the recommended scenario, that is fourteen point one hundred dollars. And so again, kind of it shows down here what the minimum versus recommended is. Right now, we're saying uh per month, the average single family home pays sixty four point four five dollars. Um. And the minimum would be an increase of three dollars and twenty two cents in twenty twenty five. And if we went with the recommended, it'd be uh, what is it, seven dollars and seventy three cents. So this shows for the first three years of the recommended scenario, we're looking at a twelve percent increase for sewer. Uh, if we were to go with the minimum, it's five percent for the first two years and four percent for three years and fifty percent. So again, there is a really. There is a big difference between what we're calling that minimum. Versus recommended. Uh, but I really wanna reiterate that recommended is still just addressing our immediate needs. So I will quickly touch on stormwater. Uh. This fund. Doesn't have very many projects included in it. Generally speaking, our stormwater is included in our road projects, and those are things that we can have grant funded. So right now, the stormwater fund shows only a two percent increase. Uh. And we're not looking at making many major stormwater improvements. And then the last one is our solid waste. Uh, and Chantel, I think that there is a really large increase during COVID. Uh. Correct?
For solid waste.
For solid waste, yeah.
Yeah, the commercial accounts took a major hit to bring us back after we bailed out the fund. From the closure of COVID because we basically let everybody just turn off their garbage. Because no one was allowed inside the businesses. And we took on all the garbage on the front street in the big three hundred gallon can. So we still had all the garbage collection from all the visitors that did come. And the businesses weren't feeling the pain of not having it.
So without a mind, Chantel set us up really well with the solid waste, where we need pretty minimal increases. Again, we're looking, even twenty twenty five, just holding still as is. And not having increases until twenty twenty six and only having two percent increases.
This might change slightly.
Hmm.
Oh, that's right.
Because we've decided that we wanna try to buy another garbage truck to get rid of an older one. And so this, this could be a two percent in twenty five, too. Yes, but yeah, I just, you know, have the new numbers today for that.
It's too bad we can't like take. Take the average of the recommended. And the minimum across all the funds.
I was thinking the same thing. I know.
And then just like, yeah, spread them out. They're different funds, right?
I know.
Well, yeah, if we could just paint a magic, wave a magic wand and have it exactly, yeah.
Yeah, right. And then, yeah, just level it out across all the funds or, you know, all the increases, but, yeah.
Absolutely. Um, I I guess, yeah.
So in the past, that is the direction that the council took. Rather than you guys delving into the weeds and deciding which which fund is gonna have which increase. The council would come back with, this is the maximum amount where we're willing to increase the bills. It could be twenty five dollars. And then we have to figure out, is it?
Oh, right, yeah.
Five to sewer and none to garbage and stormwater. Yeah, we have to work with those.
Isn't effective approach? Was that effective in your opinion?
But but we need your guys' minimum. In order to build a budget.
No, that's not.
We need your direction.
You got a good way to 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 attack this or not?
I would love the recommended. And and then we actually are moving forward with what. You've heard her say several times now. We have recommended stuff that is needing addressed. Not tomorrow, but yesterday.
And again, this goes back, just like. You know, we've all talked about many times is the CIP and the idea that we're not gonna rebuild our streets and not deal with the infrastructure under it. And this gives us capital to do that infrastructure that's under it that's gonna be needed. And then also to do the streets the right way instead of, you know, we're doing a Band-Aid now. But you know that to rebuild the streets, we don't wanna do that on top of bad infrastructure. And if we only get minimums, we're gonna be able to do it over. Bad infrastructure.
Mm hmm, yeah.
Yeah, without without pursuing the recommended, uh. As the mayor's saying, like, we're not going to be able to get T I B funding to do more road improvement projects. Right now, the reason that we have the scrub sale going on is because, this was an actual quote from them, we've shown that we'll play ball. And we'll work with them to do some of these maintenance projects. That are not glamorous and are not big improvement projects. But rather, it's showing them that they that that they should have trust in us and can believe that we actually will maintain our infrastructure. Because they have told us that they don't currently have faith based on our payment condition ratings. That we actually will be able to maintain the investments they make in the city.
Wow.
And that's a really big deal.
Yeah.
With T I B, our our uh. Grant ratio, grant to city match ratio is ninety percent to ten percent. So without those, we don't have the availability to do any more road projects. And again, when we go in and cut into their brand new road, because we have failing infrastructure underneath, we're just once again undermining that relationship and the ability to get those grants.
Chantel, can you clarify? So from what you what you said earlier. So the council could recommend that we increase the entire utility bill. But then. You would go in and figure out where those funds?
Kevin will go in and he'll figure out with Andy's help because it is about prioritizing.
So it is kinda like.
Each fund, which is the most important, where where do we need the cut from in order to maximize the dollars? For all the utilities, because every street has a water and a sewer with it, possibly a special water. Yeah.
So it is kinda like taking the. You know, the average.
Yeah. And and Andy's been with us a couple of years now, and that was the very first day she started. Uh, if you recall, she did presentations before about I C I P, the Integrated Capital Improvement Plan. And in that plan, she went through our entire community and rated. But point scores to every street, every sewer line, every water line. So she knows. She can look at her list and go, okay, these are the worst ones, but maybe we need this one up here because it's failing tomorrow.
Right.
And even though this one's bad, this one's more important than it's a main line or, you know, she she has all that data.
And that is included in the recommended. So the recommended does include, I don't have to look at the exact dollar amounts, but it's roughly six thousand for six hundred thousand dollars per year. In water main replacement, five hundred thousand dollars per year in sewer main replacement. Uh. I can't remember if there was a stormwater. I think stormwater is included in roads. So the way, the way I worked that out, um. We would be able to go in and do a block by block project per year that is fully rebuilding the infrastructure. So we're starting with the water and sewer. We're re redoing the storm as necessary and then paving the road and if required, putting in sidewalks. And so really, it's a way that we can build from the ground up. And be a lot more efficient in our replacements instead of just doing little bits and pieces.
Right.
Uh, which is not cost effective, nor is it effective for residents whose street gets ripped up four times.
That's a. Fifteen year plan, twenty year plan?
That's a really long term plan. Depending on the situation, how that plays out, I I would tell you it's like a. Thirty year plan.
Yeah.
Well, and even though the thirty year plan, once you finish in thirty years, you start over.
Yeah, sure.
Right, yeah.
So it's it's a never ending plan, in reality.
Absolutely. But really, it's setting us on the track so that we can start to make these improvements. Whereas historically, up until this point, we haven't done that. We still have our original structure in the ground. And again, things age. Even even our duct lined pipe that we put in now, we assume has a useful life of fifty years. The older materials that we were using in water mains previously, uh. Are are uh galvanized. Uh. Sorry, my brain is just going blank right now. Help me. Cast iron, cast iron.
Yeah, there's, there are some amazing technological leaps as well, though, with the big balloon liners that they blow through and it lines the pipes. There's some really cool.
Which is.
We just did that.
One of our sewer.
Yeah.
With the sewer, yeah.
Aside of sewer.
We planned to put a few of our sewer mains last year, yeah.
That's pretty sweet. I saw that in my housemate or something, like. Pretty awesome technology. Cost effective.
He missed the demonstration.
Yeah.
So. I know there's a lot of information, uh. But with all of that. It's not as straightforward to just say. Here, we want the average person's. Uh, water bill to increase by max of their dollar. Because we're also looking at shifting structure. So back to that balance where we're looking at, uh. Having the revenue stability, the cash on hand in order to make improvements. And then also that stewardship piece, the conservation piece. That's where our new rate structure that we're looking at is coming from. So right now, this shows what our current rate structure is for a single family resident. Uh. In the city. And. The zero, so this. This is a tier number, and then this is the number of gallons that someone consumes per month. Um, this rate is how much they pay per, excuse me, thousand.
Thousand.
Thousand gallons.
Thousand gallons. And then this ratio is looking at um the rate from the the previous. So essentially, this two point two is saying that this two point three eight is two point two times one point oh eight. So. Right now. We have a base rate. From zero to seventy five hundred gallons. Then some, when someone has a water bill, they pay a base rate, and it automatically includes seventy five hundred gallons. It as part of that base rate. So. Even if I use four thousand gallons and maybe only uses three thousand, we still pay the same base rate per month. Uh. And then on top of that, once we start to use over seventy five hundred gallons, we are paying a dollar and eight cents per thousand gallons. And it increases, and our top tier is greater than twenty five thousand gallons per month, which is very high. I wanna be clear, that's very high. That is a lot of water usage.
Do we have? Residences that are paying at the twenty five thousand gallon?
My house uses thirty thousand gallons a month if I water every night.
You have a jungle?
No, I'm guessing busted irrigation.
Busted, you're saying.
Yeah, but I looked at, when I bought the house, I looked at the history for the last, as long as I can go back on the app. And yeah, it's it's thirty thousand a month. She was waters every day.
It's not a lot of people, yeah.
It's not a lot?
It's it's probably less than ten percent of the areas in there.
The top thirty percent uses fourteen thousand gallons or more.
Hmm. What percentage use the base rate?
You know, I don't have that information yet.
I think, so what I'm getting at with that is. We talk about forty percent of the home being unoccupied or second homes. What if there was a way, if you used zero? If you use zero to a thousand. It's a big, like, it's like. Five bucks or ten bucks.
You were really on it, and I promise we're getting there.
Okay.
So this is the current structure.
Alright.
And I think I touched, yeah, I touched on the three components that I wanted to explain in the current story. So. The structural recommendations that we have right now. Base fee, the tier bonds and the tier costs. Uh. And I don't really have much other information, but. Right now, so the base fee, there's two ways we can look at the base fee, and this all comes back to that race capability piece. The base fee can either include consumption or it cannot include consumption. Now, as we're trying to balance all of those three components that were the goals of utility rate study. Uh. I'm gonna say staff, but it was Chantel, Selby, the mayor and I all met with Kevin to really go through this and come up with our staff recommendations to you at this time. And again, this is ultimately your decision, but I wanna outline this as our initial recommendation. And from there, we can continue to refine together. So. With the base fee, we are looking at having an eighty five percent fixed fee. And fifteen percent variable fee for our income from water users. And what that means is that we would get eighty five percent of our income, our revenue, from the base fee. And fifteen percent would be driven by consumption. And again. The the lower that fixed fee is, the more we're encouraging consumption. Yet at the same time, the inverse is true, uh. The the more. Let me think about this, I'm sorry. The more, uh. The the less we have, oh my gosh, I just lost it. Oh.
That's the use of all we make.
Exactly, thank you. And then and then the the less reliable our income is. And that's where we really have to be careful because we want to encourage conservation. And at the same time, we also need to be sure that we have the money on hand in order to fund our budget each year. And so in working with Kevin, this seventy five percent kind of feels like that middle ground from what we're seeing from other agencies and how we can really balance. Really pushing towards conservation and also really having a pretty stable income for Chantel up here.
You said seventy five.
Eighty five? We're shooting for eighty five. Other agencies.
Eighty five. Did I say seventy five? Yeah, sorry, sorry.
No, sorry.
Eighty five, eighty five and fifty.
What what's the percentage at right now?
I think it's ninety two.
Ninety, yeah, on base rate.
I wanna say ninety two.
Ninety two?
Yeah.
And then the other, the eight percent is the.
Is extra.
Is extra.
From Selby, really.
I mean, I use over twenty five gallons, I think.
I'll say it's the school district and the city itself, the two biggest.
Yeah, yeah, the, the biggest seniors are definitely the city.
I suppose, yeah.
Or do they pay the same as the household, homeowner?
They pay according to the type.
Yeah.
They, well, commercial bit worse, yeah. So, different than, than residential.
But yeah, right now, we're, we're only looking at residential. Uh, okay. Any questions on the base fee before I move on to the next? Uh, so then, the next one is those tier volumes, so like I showed, right now, we have, uh, zero to seventy five hundred. Uh. So what, what we did, we looked at this with Kevin, and we went through all the data that he has over. Our consumption because of the, uh, the meters, the smart meters we have, we can get good data, uh, across the whole year. And so we, we basically looked at seventy percent of consumption volume per household per month. Uh, in the winter, across the annual average and in the summer. And when we look at the winter, that doesn't include irrigation, so we're saying that's simply what's being used in a household. So we took that information, we looked at seventy percent of the use in the winter, and that maxes out right around four thousand gallons per month. And so, our first tier, we're recommending feet from zero to four thousand gallons. And the goal there is that's less than an average home uses per month in the winter. And by setting that at seventy percent, we can encourage conservation from a decent portion. So, one, we've increased that tier size. But then also because we're not recommending that the base fee has any consumption included in. That even if someone is using a thousand gallons, they are paying more now than the person next door to them. That uses zero gallons. And so that's the piece of how we can balance having revenue stability where we still have the base rate from everyone. But also are encouraging conservation so that people use less water. And they pay for a thousand gallons. And again, that, that first tier, the high end of that is seventy percent of winter use. And that tier would have similar to this structure, um, except that we set the ratio with one point oh. That would be our least expensive tier. So yes, we're encouraging conservation because per thousand gallons you are paying. This is not totally accurate numbers, but one, between one and two dollars. We're encouraging conservation. Yet, we're also making that the least expensive of all the tiers. So, I'm sorry, I don't have this in graphical form right now. But the tiers we're looking at is zero to four thousand gallons, again, those pieces of the mini on seventy percent of winter consumption. The next piece is, or the next tier is four thousand to ten thousand gallons per month. And the ten thousand is stemming from the seventy percent of the annual average. Uh, so we're saying that's a location where we can still encourage conservation, but again, it was just a logical path that we had. Uh, as we're looking at the consumption data we have. And then the next tier is from ten thousand to fourteen thousand, where fourteen thousand is seventy percent of summer consumption. And so that includes irrigation. So we're saying, that first year is what your normal home would use, the next tier is a little bit more than that. And then the final tier is really the irrigation, or the third tier is the irrigation, from ten thousand to fourteen thousand gallons. The final tier, so we proposed a system of four tiers, that would have anything greater than fourteen thousand gallons per month. Uh, would be charged the highest amount. And ultimately, that's, based on our data, that's about thirty percent of the water consumption in the city. Uh, is over fourteen thousand gallons per month. But that will, I'm sure that's primarily due to irrigation, uh. But again, that's, that's really high consumption per single family. Uh. So.
So when you look, so when you overlay that with. The rate, you're talking about rates, right? So we got the size, we got that, you just. And then you look at the rates now, and it, we don't, we don't wanna nail people, I mean, like, they don't. You know what I mean, that they fall kind of in this, so if you, if you take a hard look at like, who's really gonna be affected, like, what would you, like, what percent of people are really gonna be? Paying the more, that's the concern, right?
Average, and I don't know that I actually have this, but I think I just have this from my conversation with Kevin, I don't think I have it, but I show you. Uh, the average bill with most. Most, or sorry, is it the average bill? I think the average bill would slightly decrease.
Right, the base rate was gonna start lower, so that even when you got to that four thousand normal, you would still be under.
Which is, how many, what percentage of our?
Percentage, I'm not sure, but if I remember right, it, it was a couple dollars. So the person that is gonna only hit tier one, even with all the change recommendation. They actually drop a couple bucks in their monthly bill.
Where's Karen? You know, let's get this, let's get this out, let's make a slide.
Kevin already has all this, he's working on his presentation, which we're gonna do next.
I think so.
We just wanted to give you this base level data tonight, understanding, let your ask questions, so. If, if you throw something at us tonight that we're not sure. We're gonna make sure Kevin covers that in, in the next.
Well, that highest rate, though, the ones that are gonna use it, we also bumped that up.
Yes.
To close to five.
Uh, yeah, four?
Or something, it was.
That was the third piece of it. So, base rate, tier size, and then the last piece is the tier ratios. And so here you can see, again, this is our current structure, uh, but between tier two and tier three. The ratio of two point two, so. In order to further encourage conservation and really encourage conservation on the highest consumption level. The higher we make these ratios as they increase in volume. Uh, the more we encourage further conservation, so again. Uh, in our proposal, and I'm sorry, I don't have this in graphic form right now, but. Uh, this ratio would be a one up here because there would actually be a, a rate associated with tier one. Uh, and I, I think what we looked at was one, like a ratio of one. Two, three, one, one, two, two and a half, four, something like that.
I think we're trying to accelerate more in, into the fourth tier.
And Kevin can pull that data, cause he was, he basically took our conversation and is revising this and then preparing that. For his presentation, but again, I wanted to just give you a heads up on what that's gonna look like, and where we're stemming from, maybe those systems.
And, and my bigger question is, are we headed in the right direction? Cause we've heard you want conservation. We've heard before, we wanna start building at zero gallon. So that's what we have asked Kevin to work through.
For the first tier, Andy, will you? Will you elaborate on why you landed on zero to four thousand?
Yeah, so four thousand gallons, uh, is, represents seventy percent of winter consumption.
Why did you use winter consumption as a baseline for that first tier?
Because winter consumption doesn't have irrigation.
True, but it also discourages people from even having like flower pots in the summertime.
Absolutely, and, and honestly, it was more a decision that we based that on, uh, just. Because we, we needed a starting point, so looking at that winter consumption. We have an idea of what, uh, an average home uses without having irrigation.
And wasn't winter, it, it's not summer and winter. Winter's like October, November through April, May.
May.
Yeah, I guess, yes, I guess as, as a kind of a contrary talking point. I'm not sure if we want to discourage all irrigation, I have multiple homes on my block. Where people don't do anything to their yards whatsoever, and we get really, really tall, like two and three foot high. Grass and weeds, and it's more of a fire hazard, I wish they would water every once in a while. And I don't want them to have a lush green lawn all the time, but I also don't want this to be. So prohibitive for people, or they don't wanna increase their water bill, that they don't do anything at all, right? So I feel like, in my opinion, we haven't quite landed on the sweet spot, I feel like four thousand is a little bit low. I would say maybe five thousand is a little bit better, cause you're at least encouraging a little bit of maintenance on site. On people, at, on people's properties.
Understood, um, and yeah, we can, we can definitely revise.
And I think.
Just, just a suggestion, I mean, nobody else has to agree with me, but I, I feel like four thousand is a really big. Drop if we're just going off the average of winter consumption.
And I would say, though, that too, that in those next tiers, we don't jump near as far as we do at the, the big. The end tiers, and again, we don't have those right here, but it wasn't. It wasn't totally discouraging at, at that next tier. Um, it was trying to get those who absolutely. Don't have a need to use a lot to get the break, right? To make it low enough that they actually could see some savings. Versus, like, the illustration now, where seventy five hundred, you could be using three or four or five. You're paying for seventy five hundred, basically, right? Everybody is, so. Trying to get that balance, and you're right, I mean, it is, it is about where that sweet spot is. But, but I'll just say in terms of, of encouraging the conservation, not only is it a. A policy hopefully that you'll espouse, but it's also a critical one for, the reason we got these fancy meters. Was through grants from Icicle Work Group. Was so that we would seriously look at conservation pricing.
Oh, absolutely, I'm, I'm all for encouraging conservation, I just wanna make sure we're not swinging the pendulum too far.
Absolutely, yeah, and I can just share with you personally, cause I really don't know. I don't know whatever the water bill looks like, but I know for me, I think that even in the summer, we use about three thousand gallons per month at our house, and we have. Garden beds in the front, we have plants, and then in the back, we have a smaller area of grass, so. At least base, I mean, this is totally anecdotal, I'm only sharing my own experience, but, uh. With that four thousand, for someone who had a yard such as mine, it would not be, uh, over that four thousand. So I, I think it may just shift how people landscape their areas and how they choose to irrigate and. Uh, and like what, do you know, do you plant need a plant, things that needs to be watered, those types of things, uh. We looked at incorporating similar to what Schlange and me has, where they incentivize. Uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna use, I'm sure accidentally the wrong term, but essentially the removal of grass and the replacement, uh, with hardscape. And they have a program in place, uh, that if you show the amount of water consumption reduction you have. That there's, uh, payments in exchange for that. It's really challenging for us to implement such a program as that, because it does involve like these pre and post inspections and. But it, it just becomes a really cumbersome, complicated process. But similarly, we can encourage a similar result from such a policy. That at the same time doesn't hopefully discourage people too much, like, looking at this, even if someone was to, you know, go over that. Four thousand gallons, up to five thousand gallons, it would be two dollars per month.
Actually, it might, that might even be a break even point from current rates, because again, the base rate is gonna go down. And so those first four thousand gallons, you're feeling just a slightly lower bill. But by seven or eight thousand, you've got maybe a couple bucks, you know, within your years too. It's, it was really targeted, we looked at several different scenarios, and we, we, we chose kind of in the middle. And it's fifteen thousand or more, it starts to be like, oh, I'm using some water. And twenty five thousand, those folks are definitely gonna be looking to conserve.
Well, yeah, like, like Selby said, so like, what do, what do residents do that, you know? Like, I, I noticed that my bill went up, I think in, in the winter, and I was wondering why my use wasn't so high. And it was because I had a leak somewhere. Yeah. And so.
Yeah.
What do the residents do when their water bill spiked?
So, Beverly, our utility, we have billing clerk, she watches everybody's accounts. She has it set to give her alerts when she sees spikes that are abnormal. On each individual account, so she's aware, uh, when she gets the alert, she goes and pulls up that account and looks more close. To see, because, and, and you can do that too, that's the whole ready manager software. That you can go into your own meter and look at it by the hour every day. And you can see, I have no water right in my house, and there's this huge spike, and it's like, wait a minute, what's going on? So, the meters are fantastic at helping us locate those. Uh, we do also have the program in, in the books on the code, that if you have a leak. It's identified, you get it fixed, you bring in the bill showing that you fixed it from a plumber or whoever. We credit off ninety percent of those overages. So we will work with you as long as you fix it immediately. We're not gonna give you that leeway if you let the leak go for five or six months.
Okay, thank you.
Is this, is this all for one? So that if you have an affordable house, it's still this?
It's every residential, uh.
This is the single family residential.
Yeah.
So multifamily is different, commercial is different, this that we're presenting tonight is just single family residential.
Okay, well, if I have an affordable house, I bought an affordable house. Because I qualified for it, in the residential area, is that my rate, or because my house was affordable, it's gonna be cheaper?
We don't have anything currently in the rate structure that would allow for a cheaper utility rate. We do have the hardship discount and the senior discount that you would have to qualify for. Uh, but beyond that, there is nothing in place right now for an affordable home to have a different utility bill.
It's all based on meter stocks. You have three quarter inch meter, you pay this base rate, and then you pay the usage rates. You have a one inch meter, you pay a higher base rate, but you still have the same usage. Because even though your meter's bigger, that doesn't necessarily mean that you're using more water than the person next door, it just means that you want that preference.
I just would assume that my meter is. Is like this, is not some weirdo thing, big thing or something.
I believe it's a three quarter standard meter.
I would hope so.
So that is all I have prepared for you tonight, I would love. I would love to answer any questions you have, and anything that we can't answer, we can happily take to Kevin and have him prepare for his next presentation for you. Uh.
Can he, can you do something where, cause you've gone piece by piece? Can you do something where, um, your sewer waters, your sewer, your water, blah, blah, blah?
Absolutely.
The pile.
Yeah.
Is so much money.
Yep.
Because when you, you say like, it's a dollar more, it that sounds, oh, no big deal. But there's a lot more that are getting two dollars more or three dollars more or whatever, so we don't have a total to look at.
So is it helpful to have, uh? To have something similar to this, just average bill, but then across all funds like this, so if we had. Something similar that would show just your average user for water sewer and stormwater, cause.
I think so, I would like that.
Okay, can you tell us what average means? Like, on the water, what tier is that? What, what tier is average? Do you know what I mean?
I do know what you mean, and I don't have the answer to that one.
Uh, on our last rate study, seventy five hundred was the average total gallon on a three quarter inch meter.
Okay.
A little bit lower than that.
Yeah, you know that seventy percent of that annual average is ten thousand gallons.
Oh.
So this eighty one seventy five is reflective of tier one, essentially. Using up to seventy five hundred gallons.
It's a little over because the base rate is seventy seven.
Yeah.
So yeah, I guess, I guess back feeling it, then we would know that that is. More consumption than just the base rate would be the average, because I think our base rate is like seventy seven dollars.
I would say seventy seven even.
For everything.
For a three quarter, for a three quarter inch meter, up to seventy five hundred gallons, your base rate currently is seventy seven dollars.
A month.
Yes.
For.
Water.
Well, we cut it, it was, what, what did we use to get it?
And like, ten years ago, we cut it.
I, I don't even think it was that long ago.
No.
It was, yeah, because.
If I had been on the council a bit before we went through.
I know it's, it's only. Kevin will go with commercial too. Commercial though, we're, we're doing similar. So we're gonna be looking at charging a little more on the usage and changing it because I'm, I'm pretty certain they, they only have. They have the base of seventy-five hundred and then they have either one or two tiers. Where residential has the four and. I'm pretty certain we talked about increase and having more tiers for, for commercial as well.
So some of the complication adding onto that, uh, my trend house said some of the complication is that residential. Yep, we have pretty good data on what their usage is, right? Like generally, I mean. Anything that is falling under our residential category is a single family home. In the residential zone. So that's this piece. The complication comes in when we look at the multifamily and the commercial. Because we don't have good indication as to what is actually happening on that property. So for example, with multifamily. If they, so a multifamily account, they pay one utility bill and it's however they divide it. If, you know, it's a rental, the landlord um is paying that bill. And it's included in the rent versus if it gets split up and each, each unit pays it, uh, that varies. But at the end of the day, it's not just the user that's paying the bill, it's combined. And the consumption is combined. And so. If you, if you're sharing a meter with your neighbor and you're, say you're in a multifamily unit and there's six of you. And you're trying to conserve water, so you're reducing your consumption. But your neighbors aren't. That's not going to be clearly reflected in your bill. It's going to be a very minimal amount. And so in Kevin's experience, the challenge they find in having these different tier rates in multifamily is that. We don't have an easy way to encourage conservation across the board because of how that bill is structured. It's very similar in commercial, uh, because different businesses have different water demands. And so these rates are. The goal is to have it based around conservation and showing how we can better use our, our water at our single family home. But in the commercial zone, um, if you have a brewery versus a jewelry shop. They're going to have. And so setting those tiers at a logical uh. Like volume is very challenging. And this is why we're relying on Kevin, because Kevin is the expert in this and Kevin has done this across all sort of jurisdictions.
So you take, so they, I mean, so. Take the, you, you, you take the environmental piece out of it, but at some level, right? If it's challenging and he says challenging, it's been, they've tried to figure it out for ten years. You just will have to go for the infrastructure, let's say for the infrastructure. The reality is this rate for multifamily, it needs to be, it's divided up and we know the one rate splitting off, right? It's just gonna have to be the consumption and it's a dollar rate and it may be higher.
Yeah.
We're gonna have to go for infrastructure. Right? At some level, we can't.
Tell them what you mean by go for infrastructure on this.
Let's let them pay more for, let's let them pay more. The multifamily housing, the multifamily.
So let me explain.
Yeah.
The previous council, when we did the last rate study, went the opposite direction with that. Because what we found was multifamilies were typically overall. Using less water than a single family home. So let's say there's three units. Okay, you've got three units.
Yeah.
Versus one three quarter or one, one household. This person's using ten thousand gallons. These three are using ten thousand gallons.
Yeah.
That's what drove the base rate on the multifamily down with the last rate study. Was that the council at the time said, why are we penalizing these four smaller families could be a one Z or a two Z with no children? While over here you had a residential home with a full family using a lot more water. So the base rate itself was purposefully lowered for multifamily and I'll warn you, you have a lot of multifamily in this community. And quite a few of them are seniors. So you will hear from it if we flip that back.
So they, so when I think about this, uh, I live in a condo, right? In an HOA and I rent. I don't pay, I don't know what my water bill is. I'm not attached to it. It's attached to my neighbor behind me and it's paid. By the landlord and Thor by me, in HOA. So multifamily housing, are they, are they paying the water bill individually or is the landlord? That we don't know that, right?
Most of them have a single meter. There are a few that have individual meters per.
Right.
That was a decision made at the time of the development by the developer.
That's fine. What I'm saying right now, say there's one meter and it splits into fifteen units.
It goes to one person. We, the city, do not break it up.
That's fine. So. Those, the, those renters pay whatever bill the landlord gives them. They can check, the landlord can charge them whatever they want. And so this comes down to even. Who's paying for it? The landlord or the renter? I don't know what people's contract. So at the end of the day, we're assuming that the tenant. Is gonna pay more, but that may not, may or may not be the case. So we would be penalizing the landlord, not the people, the individuals. Is what I'm saying. When I say charge them.
Yeah.
Not people, the landlord.
Well, are you giving one bill?
He'll pass it on.
Are you sending one bill? Let's say there's three P, three multifamily, yeah, three, in a multifamily unit, or three units, excuse me. Are you sending? The total of those three as one bill to the man, to owner?
If there is one meter.
One bill, right?
That unit, three, three people unit, if you want to call it that. Gets one bill. It has to be shared between the three of them. They deal with the sharing. The city doesn't break it up. If there are three separate meters, so each unit within it has its own meter. Each one of them pays a base rate plus their usage rates.
So each one of them pay a, a rate. And if you have one bill that goes to a manager. It's still covering all the water usage either place.
Absolutely.
I'll give you an example, Sharon. I lived at the Rothenberg condos, thirteen units. There is one bill goes to HOA, the HOA pays for it and it was included in my rent.
And he probably had an annual meeting where maybe they reviewed what their total bills are. And they voted and they talked about, okay, well, this year we have to raise our dues. Because guess what? Y'all are using too much water. Exactly. Someone is.
I'm not saying you, I'm just saying any one of those.
Given how much water he's.
Funny when he moved out.
He's got a broken pipe, he doesn't count. I'm talking about.
Oh, and then to complicate it further, some of the, some of them have sub-meters, so they, they pay one bill, but then they meter themselves. Their own. So there's another.
Yeah, and keep in mind, we have quite a bit. There's threes, there's fours, there's sixes, there's eights. Um, I think there's tens and possibly twelves. So if, you know, a twelve unit may have a three inch meter. So their base rate is any higher than your average, but. It all calculates out at the end of the day and they divide it by twelve and.
Right.
That back.
Right.
So for me.
Lot of variables. Andy, this is a, this is a lot of really great information. For me, it's hard to conceptualize. Real life, how this will impact people as we're making a policy decision, right? In, in the near future. It would be really helpful if building on what Sharon kinda said. Where we're looking at all of the different enterprise funds individually. If we could see them all together and what the old final bill will look like and also real life scenarios playing out with our new. Water tiered structure and how that will play out in varying different scenarios. That will impact real life people in our community so that we better know and understand. How our decisions are impacting people that will help guide us. Down whether or not we're going minimum or recommended specific to water. What, how we want the tiered structure to play out, that sort of thing.
Yeah.
And landing on some dollar amounts at the end.
Absolutely. And I'd recommend we do three quarter and one inch. So do a scenario for both.
Yeah.
And, and I think it would be helpful also to do some of that. Real life scenario breakouts in. Multifamily and commercial as well, so that we know how.
Absolutely, yeah.
Varying different types of multifamily and varying different sizes and uses of commercial will also be impacted.
Yeah. Yep, absolutely. Like I emailed you with a small mom and pop. Versus a small hotel.
Yeah.
Versus a large hotel versus a restaurant.
And that's where, I'm, yeah, obviously there's a lot of factors here and it's quite complex.
And Kevin has all that data. He has all the individual account data already. That was part of the initial data request.
Okay.
Um, he may need help just asking us, is this a small or a large?
Well, and I think, I think this, I think that this chart is really helpful, but if we are already. Giving direction that we're moving and modifying our tiered structure towards a focus on consumption. This doesn't really apply anymore because this is based on what we currently have, right? And our future needs for re- revenue, but we would need to conceptualize the new tiered structure, right?
I believe that this is based off. But Kevin's gonna have to confirm, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I don't know that, but I know that with the tiers we had looked at, this is what. We had provided.
But it doesn't say how we get there. It gives us that average, but it doesn't give us.
Yeah, I would, I would, I would love for you to like connect the dots for people.
Okay.
You know, where does eighty-one seventy-five come from?
Yeah.
That sort of thing.
Okay. Can do. Any other questions? No, this is great. Lots of information. Lots of information. And again, just close the loop from where we started on. This really obviously has big impacts to people and we acknowledge that and understand that. And at the same time, in order to move forward and actually provide reliable utilities to our, to our community. We're gonna have to make really big investments. So.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, you got five minutes for break. Well, the heartler, the Leavenworth City Council meeting for September twenty-fourth, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. And.
Of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, roll call.
Sharon Waters.
Anne Husbands.
Shane Thayer.
Ambassador Master.
Okay, we do have a notice from one council member, Zeke Reister, that he would not be attendance. So I would entertain a motion to excuse him from the council. Okay, moved and seconded. All those in favor, Sierra Dean? I thank you. Um, next is a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I have some questions.
Okay. Guessing it might be for Shantel.
I'm, I don't remember when I did these.
Didn't have four.
Have four, yeah. Okay, the first question is on page, excuse me. On page two, accounts, accounts payable and. They're all, all those meter uh ones. What are those? Are those for, in fact, um, Shannon's here? Are these for new meters or?
Are you on accounts payable nine twenty-five or are you on a different one?
Accounts payable nine twenty-five.
Okay, change two.
It starts on the bottom of page one, the very last.
I see all those. Okay. Kail America, that's parking meters. So we actually have not been paying them since twenty twenty-two while we were negotiating and working with these are the. On-street single meters. That it's a, it's a monthly fee to have those meters connect to the internet and provide us data. And we have not been paying them for, ever since April of twenty twenty-two. And so now we've agreed, we've come to the conclusion and Shannon has approved every one of these for us to pay the bills and get us current with them. Uh, my understanding though, and so correct me if I'm wrong, we will be moving away from that system?
Yes. Is that a chargeback? Were there some chargebacks on with that discussion?
So this isn't revenue?
I don't know. As far as like, there was some, we were, we're, don't think we're particularly pleased with them, right? And so we've got a chargeback or is that why we have?
I didn't mean to see you out there, Shannon. Look, Shannon, talk.
He's a blober. It's not Civic Smart, that is a different company. There was a discrepancy from the beginning with Civic Smart, who is the original. Cop vendor that we work with. They brought everything in. They sold the city of Leavenworth ten kiosks. We installed four. In twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. They continued to bill us for all ten kiosks. Up until twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, when I said, no, we won't be paying for ten, we're only doing four. So this was all to get them to go back. And take off the other six and then maybe add them when we put them back into place. January or February this year. But we actually do have ten meters running.
So are we using these meters that?
Yes, we are. Those are Calais kiosks.
Okay, each meter is a kiosk.
They're multi-space meters.
Multi-space.
Okay, and we're using all of them?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
And that bill does all kinds of good things. That's why we. Off track with Calais is new because now they're called Flober.
And moving forward will now be current and so we'll just have monthly normal bills, not all of this.
And it will all be from Calais.
So that will be more, yeah, clear.
Okay, so this is the payoff of bill we've had since twenty twenty-two. And now, next month, uh, next council meeting, when I look in here, what am I gonna see for the meters, anything?
Uh, you'll see the standard monthly.
We have one monthly one.
Okay.
Yeah. Well, keep in mind that we're going to go from ten meters to forty.
To what?
Forty.
Forty, fifty, we're adding forty. Okay.
From the demos, it looks like we're current now through August of twenty twenty-four.
Okay. Okay, on page nine, down near the bottom, the River Recreation Shuttle. January twenty-ninth through September second. And so that's what it costs us to shuffle, shut, shuttle. People out to.
From the.
Where they wanted to go.
From the East Leavenworth uh boat launch to the, put in either the hatchery, which only lasted the first couple of weeks of the program or to the bridge, yes.
Okay, and we're done with this now until there's something comes up next summer.
Correct. If Link will take it on next, next uh summer, we'll let Link do it. If Link doesn't want it, then we'll go out to RFP again.
This was a full contract at, at, at that set amount.
Yes.
So they did it all through the summer and then billed us at the end of the season.
Okay.
That's about, I mean, that's exactly what they, that was, yeah.
Okay, the next question is on page eleven, down at the very bottom. Pool picnic tables.
Yes, so I was out around the pool and uh was approached by a parks employee. Who was complaining about the heft, the weight of the metal picnic tables that are inside the fence for the pool, which they have moved when they want to go. So the request was if we could get some lighter picnic tables for the pool area and then find another place for those metal picnic tables. Which I planned to put on the concrete pad in front of the Alliance Club building. Fortunately, the picnic, these picnic tables, um, we did not receive what we thought we ordered. Uh, we are looking to get a, uh, to get an exchange now.
Okay, and then the, the tables that are now in the pool.
Would move out.
Would move out and something else moves in. Okay.
And that came out of lodging tax, Sharon.
Pardon me?
That came out of lodging tax.
Okay, that doesn't hurt my feelings. Um, okay, on page fourteen, near the bottom. For the Transpo Group USA. For on-call transportation, planning Leavenworth Climbing Gym. for on-call transportation, planning Leavenworth Climbing Gym through August. What's that?
Uh, that was a pass-through toss. They had to review a transportation study or memo that was prepared by, uh, the Leavenworth Climbing Gym, the, the rock to the state built out behind Safeway.
So they had to do it or the planning commission?
They submitted a traffic impact analysis. We sent it out to Transpo Group for review and to get in currency. And then they will re- repay us.
Okay.
That's a reimbursable.
Okay, and so that's for both of those, the, the, the one at the bottom of the page fourteen and the top of the page fifteen?
Oh, that was for the pre-app. Yeah, yeah. So we had a pre-application meeting for a coffee shop going in, uh, at the corner of Chumstick and Highway Two. And we, uh, that also went out to Transpo Group to review, um, because we don't just accept things as
Yeah.
and rubber stamp them. We want to have some view look at them. So that was what that was for.
But that'll also be a reimbursement?
Uh, I think you can only reimburse the rock too.
Okay, the next question. Looks like it's for Dan Cottish, sure. So that must have been all the questions I had in that section. Thank you.
All right, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Salute.
Secondly, all those in favor, let me see your hand. Passes unanimously. And then before we get to comments from the public, I noticed that we might have a couple of students here with us. Ah, could you stand, introduce yourself and tell us maybe a little bit about why you're here and what your plans are?
Come on. Oh, nice to meet you. I'm Chris Toto. I live in Shasta. Uh, this is for my CW class, Mr. Allen. And, uh, we have to attend at least three meetings. So this is my, this is my first one and I just do too. Glad to hear from y'all.
Welcome, welcome.
Well, my name is Naomi Williams. I'm also in job class. We're doing CFPB. I'm also interested in seeing, uh, your parents. Um, I've been being ultrasound tech. I'm a nice engineer. I also.
Well, if you want to come forward, I've got a couple pins here. I'll give you here. Come on up.
That you'll undoubtedly wear every day.
Yeah.
Yes.
These are flies here. Come on up. Now I want you to come too. I'm not gonna give it to him to.
Yeah.
Thanks, you guys.
I'll tell you, they're worth a lot of conferences I go to. All right, now any comments from anybody in the public that would like to comment on something not on the agenda? Come up to the mic if you would. Not seeing anybody or do we have anybody online?
Uh, just, no, uh, we have one, but, but hand up.
Hand up, okay. All right, then we'll move on and we've got public safety reports and Buffalo Lake. I see you online.
Yeah. How about that?
Oh, you're on mute.
No. My, uh, IT director is out of practice.
All right, what do you have for us?
So it's been a little while, so I'll start with the hours from June or six hundred and forty-eight. With fourteen foot patrol, July four hundred and twenty-four with eighteen foot patrol. August, three hundred and eighty-three with ten foot patrol, but I think one uh, supervisor hasn't gotten their hours in yet for August. Um, that was the hours. There was a speed trailer put out. Um, uh, I think it was Evans Street. There were sixteen thousand three hundred and ninety-four vehicles, um, go through it. Only twenty-one hundred were above the speed limit with eighty-five percent of them being twenty-five miles per hour or less in the twenty-five mile per hour zone. Um, there was a high of fifty and I believe it was, uh, twenty, twenty-two cars went through at ten over, so not a speeding problem on Evans.
What would be a speeding problem?
A lot more vehicles than that doing ten more, ten or over. The traffic enforcement u- unit said that's probably the safest street in the county.
Was the fifty mile an hour sighted? You know?
No, that was just on the speed, on the radar trailer. We weren't there to catch it.
Yeah, they wouldn't have done that if, if there had really been a cop.
That's for sure.
Yeah. Randy, is there any, send me that data, um, so I can relay that to the resident who asked us to have the speed sign put there.
Yeah, I can shoot that email to you.
We need sneaker ones that nobody can see.
They do have the ones that can sight, um, that'd be something that a city would have to put in and, um, kind of like Wenatchee's red light cameras, some places do it with school zones. We don't have any of those in the county. As far as anything else for us, calls are pretty normal. Um, welfare checks and mentals, um, mental health issues are up a little bit. Um, gearing up obviously for autumn leaf this weekend. Oktoberfest overtime got filled so far except for one shift, so we're kind of looking forward to that.
Sharon, you said? Yeah, I have a couple of questions. On, if there's a two obstructing resisting officer. Um, do they end up going to jail if they, um, obstruct or resist an officer?
Generally, we want them to. The jail doesn't always accept. They end up on booking restrictions a lot these days, um. They have a huge issue with housing as far as all the people coming in that have to go through withdrawals. They can't be put in tanks with more than, um, anybody else with them while they're going through withdrawals. That can take about a week. So sometimes there's booking restrictions and they won't take people even on warrants and things like that. But there are the mandatory arrests like DV, um, DUI that they do have to take.
Okay, um, under theft not classified, there are six. What does not classified mean?
Um, probably it was just shift, uh, theft when it was put in. Uh, most thefts are theft third. It has to reach seven hundred and fifty dollars to reach a theft second. Um, every now and then that happens, but most of the time it's just a theft third and that would get in on the officer's report, not on the actual calls where these are titled.
Does the person have to return what they have that they stole, if they still have it?
Uh, yeah, we try and get everything back we can.
Okay, and, and there's, um, water rescue. Here, one.
Right, that would have been out on the, um, probably on the Wenatchee River. There was actually one today that a couple tubers were out and one made it to shore, one was out stuck on a rock. So, uh, deputies and probably the firefighters go out and help them get to shore.
Okay, let me see on the next page if I had anything. What are felony war- felony warrant lists?
Uh, any felonies are charged on what we call a warrant list instead of the sector program. So warrant list is just a term for the paperwork and it was a felony charge.
Okay, and let me see. Anything else? You had, um, nine work release program participants. I wondered what they did. Uh, you know, did they, are really cleaning up the highway or?
Uh, that'd be something I'd have to check with the jail. They run the work release program. I don't believe they do too much on the work release anymore. A lot of them do, um, where they stay at the jail at night and go to their regular jobs. Uh, but there might be some that are taken out. They used to do trash, um. There's kitchen workers that I don't think would be considered under that. It's usually when they leave the building and they used to go out and do a lot of things, Women's Resource Center and Hospitality House, uh, picking up trash, different things, but I don't think they've been doing that since COVID.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have questions? All right. Thank you.
You bet. Thank you and sorry for all my confusion on my end.
All right, you got Mike here.
What do you think? Uh, so the, uh, our fuels crew has been continuing work on multiple projects throughout the fire district. Uh, some of that's been heat rest work along the Chumstick and Christensen Road. Uh, and the rest of it's been, uh, small projects throughout the city and, uh, out in the county through, uh, Cascadia Conservation District. Uh, so if anybody looking for fuel collection on a property, give Cascadia a call. Uh, they're trying to get the word out. Uh, as far as training, uh, we have our high school cadet trust return for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Uh, we have eleven new cadets and two returning cadets that were juniors that went through the program last year. They both turned eighteen and they're now volunteer firefighters with us and they also sit in that class as teaching assistants. They've already been through all the evolutions. Uh, our recruit academy started on the sixteenth. Uh, it's actually a regional academy that trains recruits from District Three, Fire District Six, which is the shaft and valley high, drive-in monitor. Uh, Lake Wenatchee Fire Rescue, and actually we do have a couple people catching fire in here as well. Uh, we also completed upgrades, uh, to our burn training facility just in time for the academy. Uh, we had, in addition to completing an SCBA competence course, which is just a maze with traps, obstructions, uh, tight spaces to things. Uh, we increased the overall square footage of our actual burn facility by about fifty percent. Uh, we added two bedrooms, a hallway, uh, to give our firefighters the ability to practice searching. Uh, we do have smoke machines in addition, so we don't always have to have a fire. We can choose a smoke machine. So less danger there. Uh, but added two bedrooms with a hallway. Uh, we're gonna be adding a kitchen with a propane, uh, burn cup is gonna be added later along with a simulated living area as well as the box itself. Uh, we also, uh, added three windows for ladder training. Uh, so that we can have more stations running during the academy, get more reps in, uh, for our new recruits. And we also built a car fire training prop which will run off propane. As far as response, uh, as this, we've responded to five hundred and fifty-six calls in twenty twenty-four. That was up from five thirteen at that same time last year. Uh, it really picked up during the summer season. Uh, we had several busy months in a row. Uh, again, we were behind and then we quickly, uh, you know, went past our goal in that same time last year. Uh, we did have a major incident, uh, on Wayne Road of the Hom Canyon. Uh, we ended up providing two overhead positions, a division suit and operations chief. Uh, a brush truck, structure engine and a water tender. Uh, Captain Wells was, uh, the initial incident commander and he actually retained operational control of the fire until it was contained. Uh, that was basically every agency in the valley, CCFD three, six, seven, eight, nine, Kazmir, Wenatchee Valley, the DNR, Forest Service, and we even had some BLM up there. Uh, very coordinated effort that went really well. We were able to keep it from becoming an extended attack. I think it only ended up being like twelve or fifteen acres. Uh, but ultimately we ended up with about sixty firefighters on scene and then we also have air attack, uh, multiple air assets, a couple of, uh, couple of helicopters, some scoopers, and we had a couple of, uh, retarded drops from the larger tanker. Uh, but it's, as the fire season's gone on, we've had several of these large-scale incidents, uh, you know, false route earlier in the year, uh, and the coordination was very, very good on this and, uh, it was a, it's a big deal for us to have somebody at the level of qualification that BLM Forest Service, DNR would allow him to retain operational control. Uh, you know, he is, you know, qualified, uh, division suit, he's very experienced in wildland, but it's very nice that our partners have that kind of faith in him and it's just a great asset that we have uh, initially. So we're pretty happy with how that went. Glad I didn't, glad I didn't get, uh, and just walk in and all that, so. Any questions?
Questions?
No question. Um, Dan says the, uh, bank of chargers and, and there's probably as many regular car fires as our electric car fires, but I feel like those burn extra hot. Do you guys, and there's different ways of disconnecting that battery from what I've seen in the back window and some of those things. Are you guys trained up if somebody backs into one of those superchargers and it lights up, is that on your radar? There's so many, yeah.
Yeah, if they backed in and calls like, you know, ripped it off, that would probably be something where we would stay back and get PUD to just isolate the power. And then when, once they've isolated the power, we can treat it like just a normal class A fire that's not energized.
Yeah.
Uh, when the cars themselves catch on fire, the battery catches on fire. Uh, we would, the Northern Washington Cheese Association has purchased the blankets uh, that encompass the whole bar, so we would make a call probably, I think, there in Wenatchee. And so it'd be fifteen or twenty minutes before we get it down here, but.
And they just cover it, just like suppress?
Just smother it, yeah. And excluding oxygen, even though it, it is an oxidizer and can create its own oxygen. But, uh, they work, they work really well, uh, you know, NFA signed up on, so that's kind of the direction that we're going, which is an improvement from the previous construction with the stoof like obvious amounts of water.
Just keep staying there till it's eight hours. It's a long time, right?
There's been some case studies now, learned a lot. Uh, the blankets tend to work really well and they're sort of, you have to leave them on there for pretty much weeks to make sure that it actually.
It's not spark up like the.
Correct, yeah. They had a big problem with extinguishing the fire on scene. Everything's good. They take it to the yard and get a call two or three days later, like, hey, that car is on fire again.
Yeah.
So there's some cities in California that have designated places where they will bury the car.
Okay.
But right now, we're, we're pretty happy with blanks. We haven't actually had, uh, an EV battery fire that I know of in the battle.
I just see so many coming in, right from West Side or whatever it is.
I, I do see Washington City, we have, mostly.
The most, I figure, yeah. So would we ever, would you guys ever purchase a blanket?
We would, yeah. It's kind of, uh, it's on our radar and something we, we want to pick up.
Yeah.
So just so that it would give us a quicker, quicker ability to get that contained. It'd be mostly like waiting twenty minutes when the car is burning in the middle of Highway Two is not ideal.
Yeah.
Our biggest concern usually is that that will happen either in a garage or directly adjacent to a building. Right, we're now trying to keep this fire from starting now, but.
Yeah.
Again, no problem, gender radar, yeah.
Okay. Anybody else?
Hi, thank you, bye.
Goodnight.
Thank you.
All right. Now we're heading into our resolutions and ordinances and I just want to again state what our expectations for everyone here is as we meet and gather and make comments together. That we're respectful of each other and acknowledge that it's okay if we disagree. Um, that prior to making comments, you're recognized by the chair, so it'd be either the mayor or Mayor Procam if I'm not here. You come to the podium and comments be made from the podium where you'll state your name and your address. Um, and then please address the council as a whole and not individuals. This is a time to comment on what's before us and not on personnel or personal matters. Um, and with that, we'll go into our action items. Um, beginning with, now at seven, approving the lease of the Wilkman Parking Lot located Highway Two and Chumstick Highway, Selden.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Council, tonight you're being asked to approve a lease agreement with the owner of the Wilkman Parking Lot. Uh, this is at the intersection of Highway Two and Chumstick Highway. Um, this is the parking lot that's next to the Bavarian Bakery. Um, the owner, uh, and I have been discussing a lease arrangement for a number of years, uh, for two years. Two years. Um, and we've, uh, finally reached an agreement that I think is, it's mutually beneficial. Um, this is a fairly underli- underutilized, um, parking lot. And I think it's partly because people have a difficulty, uh, a difficult time paying. Um, there is a queue up, there's, uh, some form of, uh, payment that is posted there, but. From what I've been told, I've tried it myself, it, it doesn't work. And the word has gotten out that we are pretty robust in our parking enforcement, so I think a lot of people just don't park there in fear of getting a ticket. So the city managing this lot um will, will make sure that it is accessible for parking, uh another anecdotal thing is. The win, my first winter here at twenty-two, this parking lot was not maintained. So during our busy Christmas light season when we had a heck of a lot of snow. And everybody was parking in our neighborhoods, if this lot had been flat out, there would have been more people. Able to get out of the neighborhoods and into this parking lot. So the lease arrangement that um that we've agreed upon is that the city would uh take over the uh. Uh take over this lot for a, a year at a time. Um we would install our technology to um to take payment, we would enforce the law. Uh we would take our revenues, um at the end of every month, we would minus our expenses and then we'd split the revenues fifty fifty. And then any uh, any inf- um violation revenue we might get, citation revenue we might get, we might get, we would, we would save. Uh we would keep, sorry, the city would keep the, the uh, the enforcement revenue, the tickets. Um so that's the location up there on the screen. Um we will signpost it, so it's easier to find the in and out of that uh, of that parking lot, which actually does kind of go through. Here's my, here, there, kind of goes through around Fig Title and in is how you get in and out. Um and there is uh, the exit is called Chumstick here. So with that, I'll answer any questions you may have.
So the, in the lease agreement, we're not paying for the land or anything?
We're not paying any money upfront, we're simply a revenue share agreement.
Well, we're buying the assets. Let's collect.
Right, yeah, but anything we deploy there, if this uh only lasted for one year, we could redeploy those assets elsewhere.
What do we, or what, have you guys decided internally what assets are you gonna deploy there?
Uh one kiosk and sensors.
Cool, entertain a motion.
Leavenworth City Council moves to approve and authorize the mayor to execute a lease agreement for the Willcliman. Parking lot between the city of Leavenworth and Willcliman LLC.
Seconded by Travis, I'll give it to you Travis. I know. Any other questions? All those in favor, let me see your hand. Opposed? It's three to one, Karen voting against. Uh discussion of the Thirteenth Street Partial Right Away Vacation, Maggie.
Yes, thank you very much. Uh this is strictly a discussion tonight. I'm bringing this to your attention because I received an application for a partial vacation of this portion of Thirteenth Street Right Away. Um and just processing it for. State law requirements, um I'm bringing it to you today and then at a future meeting we would schedule a hearing. I'm not gonna give any kind of recommendation tonight, I'm just gonna present you with some of the facts, I believe the applicants are in our fair. Today's to answer any questions you might have of them as well. Um but this is a request to vacate the west thirty-five feet of this portion of um. A right of way in your packet. Um it is adjacent to their property, it does include the city's uh Pivine Trail, which connects to the waterfront through the trail system. Located on Wenatchee River Institute and Barn Beach Properties. Um the proposed vacation includes a, a small portion of that trail. Um so if they hated an easement agreement, would need to be made between the city and the property owner. Uh along with the relocation of the existing dogway station and trail map, which are. Located at the entrance to this trail. Um the application materials indicate that there were no existing utilities within the right of way. Um I was not involved when uh there was mentioned in the materials that they had a. Site evaluation with John Shams and Tom Walkholder, I was not involved in that, so I don't know what was discussed, I can't speak to that. Um and I don't know if there have been any discussions of future plan for this um trail's use. Uh the applicant had indicated that they um want to maintain the trees adjacent to the trail, they want to create a firewise landscape. And they want um additional land to potentially create more billable area. For construction of additional housing, um because this is a multi-family zone property adjacent to the trip, uh the city right of way. Um I noted in the packet, things to consider, um. I just threw a bunch of ideas out there because we had the issue of snow, snow storage come up. Obviously, this is a heavily vegetated area, I don't know if that would be considered at all in the future, but threw it in there, um. Consider continued public access, would you want to potentially do something more with this property, maybe a pocket park, maybe improve the access? Widen it for accessibility. Uh if we may need additional easement for repair and maintenance of the existing trail beyond what's shown in the materials. Because it looks like the request goes right up to the edge of the trail. Um. And then continued access for the utilities that are in the alley back behind the property. That kind of run perpendicular to the trail. Uh and then again, the topic that's just come up a lot in community conversations is maintaining, you know, some green space. And additional park space for, for the community, so. Again, this purpose, the purpose of this discussion is just to inform you. And to allow the applicants to come and speak to you and to uh answer any potential questions. That's all I have.
Do you like to, either one addresses at this time or?
Are you familiar with the location? So the location of this is. The entryway at the Pivine Trail.
Right.
Right near Dan's Market. Yes, our house is the brown house literally right next to the trail. There's a, I'd call it kind of a sliver of property, it's pretty heavily forested right now. We requested the city remove two trees about two years ago, you guys graciously did that. Um last year, there was a tree that came down, came across the trail. Fell away from our house, look away, so one of our major goals is to. Do something, we had a firewise assessment, so kind of maintaining that area, it's pretty dense. Um in the longer term, like to potentially build. Smaller units in that location, our whole neighborhood is a multi-family. Think we could potentially get maybe one or two or three smaller sized units in that location.
Any questions this time?
It looks like the total right of way width is fifty feet, is that correct?
Right.
Um. Why are you requesting more than fifty percent of the width on your side of the right of way?
So in our proposal, we requested about seventy percent of all space, which is about forty nine. That is to maximize the space for one or two cottages, three or two, one units. Less than that, but we just need to establish. That your cottage is seventy, you can actually put in that space.
If we split it fifty fifty, it would be twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-five wide, it's pretty narrow to actually build anything. So that's the reason for the issue of what. The Pivine Trail in that region is large enough for the city to actually drive. The fork trucks, the smaller vehicles. The smaller vehicles on. And there is pretty easy access behind our house, which is another alley that comes down. That was actually rebuilt when the. The city came through and did a super move, yeah. So there's a pretty, I mean, a really good access that location vehicle wise. Even with a supply rate of thirty-five. Does that answer the question?
Okay, thank you.
It's a great question.
Any other questions?
Maggie, where, where's the primary access? Uh for the parcels to the south. Um near the river, I think that most of them are owned by Wenatchee River Institute, how do they get primary access?
Twelve. Twelve Street by the Sweetie Garden.
I don't.
Cause there's, there's multiple parcels down there, right? Do some of them require access primarily off the alley, they don't all have directly touched Twelfth Street? One of them touches the thirteenth, which is kind of my primary question. Eliminating this would eliminate primary access for one, one or more of those parcels down along the water off of thirteenth there.
Well, you could come down back out.
Come down that way.
We generally don't grant primary access off alleys only, though.
Any other questions? Again, this is just information, it'll be.
Yeah.
Here.
Set.
Curious establishment.
The reason number one, reason number three seem contradictory. There's about twenty-five hundred foot trees in that pretty small space and then. You wanna create a firewise landscape, but also build. Studios or one bedroom homes in that space, it seems.
If.
You have to remove those trees.
We have them.
So it's.
The best.
Number three.
I think the first goal is. To thin those trees and take out some of the vegetation. And then the second goal would be to see if we can actually put some structures in space. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, I was just thinking, one, two and three, the three reasons you gave seemed just contrad- just, are you? And we say thin the trees, I mean, they're, looks like they're pretty well done as far as the underbrush. The trees itself, there's not.
Well, there's some unhelpful trees.
Uh there are.
Yeah, so one car risk to come down, get the help, but.
Yeah.
In this winter, we had one that fall towards head horns.
Uh yeah, yeah. Just living in the, living in the Pacific Northwest trees.
Alright, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Again, you'll be seeing this again, but wanted to give you the, the heads up and the intro to it. Um now we'll move on to council report, Sharon.
Unfortunately for you guys, I went to a lot of places. First of all, I want to apologize to Salvy for not mentioning his part on the opening day of the playground. Um he was the first person to speak. And somehow it blew by me and, and I recognized when I got home that I left him out of the conversation.
I didn't even.
Well, now you know. On September eleventh, I attended the Women's Exchange Meeting. It was called, is it a scam? How can I protect my accounts? And we had representatives from uh Cadaver Valley Bank. Who not only shared some outside of, of bank scams, but a lot of scams and some, you were kind of an older group. So a lot of the uh people in the group had been scammed. And so it's a really interesting infor- uh informative meeting to just stay closer on your toes. And if it, if it, you know, walks like a duck, it might not be a duck. On um September fifteenth, I attended the Glan- Glad Song Program at the Snowy Owl Theater. It was a free event with donations that anyone wanted to give. Went to the backpacking free lunch program for students um in the school district. Um I have to say that if you've never been to a Glad Song program. You will be rocking out the whole time with, you know, more of my music. But you guys all like the open days music too, it's a great time, it's a great evening and everybody sings along, it's a lot of fun. So if you've ever seen that they're performing somewhere, got a good recommendation to go watch. Um I attended the Shlandago South District Meeting, we discussed a contract maintenance, matrix. The, with whom deliverables renew and replace terms of contracts. And total amounts of contracts and impacts or adjustments, we discussed several employee policies, both in the field. Those who work in the field and those at the uh right at the health department. September sixteenth, I attended the third community meeting at the festal titled Su- Sustainable Tourism. It was very interesting, it's hard to hear the comments from all the tables, so I really appreciated Karis. Typing it out on the big board on the stage so I can just follow it right there and not miss a word. Um I must confess, I don't like gag orders, especially if they're on me. So sitting and being quiet, not being able to say anything and just listening, um it was, it's kind of stressful, but. I learned something really valuable that um when we can only listen and we can't say a word. You, instead of your mind busy maybe. Trying to help you have, come up with a comment or whatever it might be, she just can relax your brain and listen and so I thank you for that lesson. It was, it's really helpful for me. Um on September seventeenth, I attended the lap retreat in the morning, which was held at Mountain Springs Lodge, which I didn't know where it was. Or I thought I knew where it was and didn't, so I ended up actually in plane, um went to my son's house up there. And uh one of my granddaughters was there, so she got in her car and led me to the lodge. Um so that was kind of a funny experience, September seventeenth, I also attended the um. Once a month, community free or by donation dinner at the United Methodist Church and it is truly a community event. September eighteenth, I helped with the backpacking program at the um United Methodist Church, we packed free lunches for students. Who qualified for the program and then we delivered them to the schools. September eighteenth, I also attended a once a year Royal Lady Luncheon at the golf course. Among other things, we discussed uh the Autumn Leaf Parade and where we'll be in it. And um this is the sixtieth year, so that's a pretty big deal. Uh last night, I attended the Accountability Stewardship Meeting. This time, at the end of the meeting, we all got to go and sit, there were several um different kind of outfits. Sitting around and we got to go sit and listen, we still had the gag order, but it was fun being a part of the, the groups as they moved around. Even if we kept. Thank you. October twenty-fourth, today I attended the Downtown Steering Committee and Salvy will report on that. Um after the Downtown Steering Committee meeting, I went to the Fire Department to view the burn house that um Michael's talking about. Um it, it's um, they've got a, like an upstairs on it. And they've got a ladder against another building, so they can, to get the firefighters and the cadets. Can uh see how it is to try to carry that equipment up and bring it down. And like Mike said, they've got a smoke, I can't remember, smoke machine and um. They, they, um let me see where I've got, I wanted to say that one thing. Okay, they have a maze inside that big crate, crate as a confidence course. For use with the breathing apparatus and blackout masks and they have a smoke machine. Um they have a fire safe mannequin, which was interesting, cause you know at the pool, we've got. You know, mannequins that go down in the water, well, float down into the bottom and then we rescue them. And so I didn't realize that they would have a fire mannequin and I think Mike said it weighs about eighty pounds. They're adding a new portion to the um what they have for the cadets. And they're hoping to be finished with that by twenty twenty-four and um. The cadets have experiences to help them learn how to navigate being a fireman and to stay safe. And then I attended a study session and here I am, thanks for listening.
Alright. And Anne?
On the seventeenth, I attended the Lake Transit Board Meeting. The, they gave a great update on the new bus barn that's under construction currently. Uh that is where all of the electric buses are gonna be housed, they're currently housed. Um. Under shelter but not enclosed and so it's kind of hard on electric buses, particularly in the winter. And this new bus barn is gonna be fully enclosed with automatic garage doors and all sorts of great stuff, so. Um they'll be able to stack more buses in this new bus barn and each row will have layers of charges. Chargers for all of the buses and that sort of thing, so um it's gonna be running. Um, it's going to be running a whole lot more efficiently and it's also going to be a lot safer for operators. Um, going to and from the, the bus barn because currently they, they cross over the actual bus traffic on, on their campus right now. The city of Lebanon continues to break boarding records with Link Transit as far as one of the communities that they serve. Uh, in the month of August. On our regular route twenty-two, we had, uh, just shy of sixteen thousand boardings. Um, our express route, which is the one twenty-two, that is, um, a quick express route to Wenatchee that has fewer stops back and forth. Um, that was just shy of two thousand and our new shuttle that just started two months ago at the beginning of July. Is about three thousand boardings now, so that continues to increase. And so overall, the city of Lebanon has thousands more boardings than any of the other. Um, inner city connectors that Link Transit serves, which is pretty exciting. Uh, last Thursday, I attended our parking committee meeting. And we had lots of great updates from Shannon. We continue to generate great revenue within our parking system. Um, the new floorboard kiosks are going to be finishing up. The install process here shortly, uh, and those will be up and running. Long term, the individual kind of two stall meters are going to be obsolete. And the committee's recommendation was just to remove those because they'll, they'll be unnecessary and they're going to be cluttering the street. Glacier Parking Lot's moving along, um. The contractor is on schedule and everything is. Working out really great. I'm very happy that the vibratory actions are no longer happening. Someone who lives very close to that parking lot. My, my, my computer and monitor is no longer shaped during the day. Um, and the bollards are installed and they look awesome. So, um. The orange signs are still up as a kind of a precautionary measure, but the bollards are looking really good. And I have already seen it deter. Some behavior in, in the downtown area now that we have those bollards in place that are not movable. People have to adhere to our open and close hours downtown. Um, on Front Street now, which is, which is really great. Um, and then we had a great conversation among the committee. We didn't make a specific decision on this, but we had a good conversation on. The front parking lot, which is the pool parking lot. And whether or not we should have. Um, some pay parameters in there outside of the pool schedule. So when the pool is not in operation in the evenings. Um, and then during the seasons when the pool is closed, uh, turning that into a paid parking lot. Um, because it is a lot closer to downtown than say the new glacier lot is, is. Going to be, uh, when it's complete and Glacier will be a paid lot. And so we had a conversation about ways of making. A front of paint, paid parking lot, um, during various hours of, uh, the day and week.
During the pool season?
During the pool season, it would, we would not charge during pool hours. When the pool is closed in the evening, we would charge. And you can, you can put a kiosk in and program it with certain times.
Just make sure you, you don't walk over the, uh, some needs. Because those folks need parking.
Yep, yep. We haven't made a formal decision. We just had a good conversation about what some of those parameters might be.
Okay, I would, um. Uh, like you to, uh, ask Kelly to attend so you got information from the pool manager on, you know. How that, how that all comes together and works. So it's not a surprise to check.
Yeah, I'm sure it would be easy for Shannon to connect with. With her as well on some scheduling items. That might be easier than having her. Kind of one of our meetings. Yeah.
Um, do the ridership that you talked about, is that mainly people who live here and work or is there any? Any, uh. Any surveys have been taken to see where all the?
Operators don't ask questions on, on who's boarding and where they're coming from and what they're doing. Um, they're really just tracking. How many people are coming on board?
Okay, I'm just curious, yeah, to how many actually workers that live here to produce some of us.
My son. But, yeah, my son's, there's forty of those visits every day per month.
That's awesome. Yeah, Link Transit, Link Transit is awesome. I love how it's free now. Um, it's a huge. Um, it's a huge plus in our, in our greater community.
Shane.
Oh, you're good, sure. You sure?
Yeah, just fine.
Uh, I attended the PRSA meeting on September twelve. Uh, we appointed Shannon Lenons as the Jump Stick representative to the board. And so I'm very excited for her to join us. At the next meeting. I also attended the, uh, community visioning. Nights on the sixteenth and last night and. I actually enjoyed last night more, like Sharon said, it was, it was really cool to. Go to each, uh, each station and have people from Link Transit. Uh, the Forest Service, CDLT, uh, Waste Loop. Uh, Shalane County, uh, Fire District Three. Uh, Tread. WRI, I mean, it was, it was amazing to be there and just. Hear, um, hear them talk to the community and, and answer questions, um, that the community members had. That's in my report.
Right, Travis. It was a PRSA meeting on the twelfth, Shane and. Happy to be a positive vote for Shannon Lenons to be a part of that organization. It's going to be great. Having her, uh, input representing the Jump Stick. Um, community visioning on the sixteenth, um. Yeah, I, I thank you for the city for giving us those cards on how to be a good listener. To your point, I mean, it was, it was just really. Good bullet points, just being able to listen to the community. And I think we do generally, but it was. I tend. It rejected, cut people off by, by daily life. And I apologize everyone there, the times that I've been up for you, but it was really. It was really great to, to watch the engagement and, um. At, at the, the two, the, of the three that I was, that, that attended. Um. I was at the Level Four Theory Promotions meeting with Sharon and, uh. The, uh, DVA, the, the, um. Ad, ad agency, um. Had two principal, uh, partners that came and presented with us, talk about the Give a Schnitzel campaign, you talk about. Marketing, you know, for any, any branding, um. To take a pivot from. Promoting the city to promoting being a good visitor. It really tells you that you've arrived as a, as a city, you know, we're, we're there. We almost don't need. Any more visitors, we need better visitors, right? And Sharon actually asked the question. How, she asked one question the whole time she was there. Out of the blue. How many is too many visitors? I mean, God love you, this is the balance that we have in this tourist town with Sharon. That's my question. Um, DVA did a great job going over the numbers and the campaigns and out of home and which markets, um. About, uh, Anchorage, Alaska, we gave that a shot, I think, and just didn't see a lot of visitors coming from Anchorage. Visit us. We're a snowy city. There's, I mean, it's like summers there, summers here. Um, uh, there's Dallas, Texas, I think is, is a really big market and. And it was, it was really cool to go over, um, some of those campaigns and see the numbers, um, and, and knowing that. Tourism is actually down last year and we've been insulated and, and we've, we've slowed down a little bit. We've all felt it this, this summer. Um, we're. We're still at a, a tourist town, but it's, it's settled in and it's, it's settled well above where it was pre-COVID. We've, we've really. Got that really good sweet spot right now. Amy. That's it for me.
Alright, thank you. Um, just few things, quick things for me, but one, um, on the visioning, I appreciate everybody's. Attendance, um, the community turned out, it was really great to see them turn out for it and. Good comments. Um, and then just a reminder, October fourteenth at the, uh. At the, uh, fire station this time, not at the Fest Hall, will have the wrap up and the reporting back. So being able to. Kind of reflect back on, on. What came out of those sessions and also what the next steps will be as we go forward. So. Again, big shout out to, um. Kara for all of her efforts and, and making this really run smoothly and, um. Like I said, um, took what was my vision and gave it life, so I really appreciate that. Um. The next thing is, you know, I just got back from Association of Washington Cities Board Meeting and. Um, you know, a number of, of communities are taking positions against the two initiatives in particular, um. That are, would repeal the capital gains tax and the carbon tax credit. Uh, taxes that we've been getting at the state level. Um, because if those pass, there's going to be huge holes in the state budget that will impact. What we want to be able to do as well. For instance, the cap, the, the, uh, carbon tax credit repeal. Um, has collected over two and a half billion dollars so far and. Um, the biggest majority of that has gone into transportation projects. So, um, if that's repealed, we're going to see, um, a huge hole that, that our state is going to have to. To fill. The other one is capital gains tax. It's just been collected over the past couple of years and. It's again a half a billion dollars a year roughly. On the, on those getting capital gains of over two hundred and fifty thousand a year excludes a lot of, um. Doesn't, uh, retirement accounts, farming. I mean, it, it, it excludes a lot of stuff. You just get basically those that are getting large. Um, capital gains off of. Their. Holdings, let's put it that way. But it's created a lot of, of income. So both of those, I would like. I'm going to send out fact sheets at the Association of Washington. They don't take a stand, but a lot of cities are. And I'd like us to consider. So I'm going to send out to all of you the fact sheets that they have on just where these dollars have been going. Um, and then I'd like to bring a motion to us to, uh, take a stand against them. It's up to you whether you do that or not. But the reason is I want to do it now is because we're going to start getting our ballots out. If we wait. And get it to you to discuss and then bring it back at the end of October, a lot of people have already have voted. So if we're going to do it. I, you know, would like to do it at our first meeting in October. So again, I'll get those out to you. You can, you know, read them over. And just be prepared to go A or N, it's up to you, um. But I think it's something we should at least look at. So that's one thing. Then also Association of Washington Cities will be having. The District Three meeting, which is all of North Central Washington, basically all the way up to the Canadian border and. Over as far as, um. Moses Lake and all, we're having, um, District Three meeting. Uh, October seventeenth, anybody can come to, but it is a day meeting. I'll have to tell you that, um. It's in Moses Lake on the seventeenth. Deanna Dawson, the executive director of AWC will be there with me. Um, and will, and hosted over in, in Moses Lake. So. That's the other thing I just wanted to get before you and that's the end of my report.
Somebody.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Today I chaired the downtown steering committee, which is pretty short, just like my report.
Short like you, is that what you said?
No.
Below the belt.
Or is it up in the water? I, I just thought that's what you were going to say.
No. Um, the downtown steering committee is very much looking forward to inviting Solus to attend a future meeting to give off the. Front Street pedestrian. That's all.
Alright, Shadell.
Uh, Council, I attended the WFOA conference last week, the annual conference for finance officers. It was very great. Wait till a lot of cool classes about budgeting, of course, uh, AI. They're telling us we're going to have over sixteen billion. AI little micro. Robots running around by twenty forty. Which is going to way exceed our overall world population that's currently at about eight billion. So just keep that in mind. They, they anticipate in the next three years, we are literally going to be. Seeing more robots than we do humans in our society. So, we'll see how that goes. Uh, I also was asked and, and had a great time sitting on a utility funding. Uh, I, I was a panelist for that and talked about challenges with funding as well as funding sources for utilities. And our last day was all focused on what we call fighting fraud Friday. So just. Teaching me the internal controls pieces, making sure that I'm following all the right steps to ensure that no one is. Committing fraud upstairs.
Fighting, I thought you were fighting frogs. So it's just had.
Uh, just a quick update on the budget, getting very close. I'm down to just CIP, pretty much. I've got a couple of little transfers. To, to contend with, but for the most part, it's the capital improvements. And a lot of those are driven by the utility rate setting. So I can only do so much until we do finalize that. Um, I can always put in every request that Andy, Andy wanted and then we can backpedal that. But quite a bit of work to actually put it all in and then not actually utilize it. So. I'm going to pick and choose how I'll, I'll approach that. Um, Finance Committee is meeting this Thursday, so you'll get a printed copy of a line item. Budget for both years. And I'll give you updates as to where we are with beginning fund balances and ending fund balances and how changes within the budget. Changes those balances. Each time that we move something around. Uh, and last but not least, including your packet under tab eleven is your office finance report. If you have any questions, let me know.
Thank you, Maggie.
I, I don't have much to share. I've been really enjoying the visioning meeting we've had. Thanks again to Kara for all her effort. Um, it's been really interesting to see what the community is wanting inside the future. And so it's been really helpful. Uh, as our community development team, um. Permit numbers are kind of slowing down. That's typical this time of the year, but inspections are crazy. Uh, code enforcement this season kind of gets a little uptick as well, so we're still super busy. Um, we are working as a team to improve our processes and outlining kind of our, starting with building permits. From intake to issuance where we can improve. And so we're working on process improvements right now, so.
Thank you. Andy.
We have a lot going on in Hubble Works too, um.
No.
But as far as the capital projects, everyone's seen the scrub seal. We have gotten a few calls on it now. Um, I do want to just reemphasize for everyone that we were never expecting this to make roads perfect. And that's not the intention of this project at all. Um, it's simply just to maintain the existing pavement surface condition that we have and slow down the degradation to keep water out. So. I know we, we've got some questions over the long term like this and we knew this was never going to be a permanent solution. It's just a stopgap until we can. Have funding in place to start to rebuild some of these roads that really need much bigger improvements. Um. Just to recap, that was the, a TIB funded project, so that's ninety percent grant funded. The other TIB project we had this year was the street maintenance project and that one wrapped up, uh. It was not last week, it was two weeks ago. So. That one is done, that was, um, the work that was on Front Street and then some of the present day streets. But it is exciting. At least I'm excited to see the season.
I'm excited to be.
Thank their patience as we work through it. Um, I guess one other thing, just because I have had quite a few questions on this. Right now, um, the chip, the rock is the surface. But we will be doing, uh, a fog seal over the top. It will be tacky and it'll be tacky for a few days. That's essentially it'll, it, it's an oil treatment on the. Uh, chip, but I do want everyone to be aware that it will be tacky. You will hear it on your, your wheels, you will feel it. It's not going to be a perfect solution, but at least it's going to buy us a lot more time with our rates and slow down that degradation. Um. Other than that, the Glacier Park lot, I don't want to curse it, but it's planned to get paved, uh, next Monday. So let's, I'll tell you, you know, like in the next three weeks, it's supposed to. Uh, we should see some really real progress on that.
Awesome.
That's it? Alright, great. Alright, there next is an executive session. We've got two issues, RCW forty-T thirty-one, ten, one. One, two is potential litigation. And then RCW forty-two, thirty-one, ten G to review performance of a public employee. And we'll go into executive session for thirty minutes and no actions to follow. Somebody want to move?
So moved.
Second.
Can't move, Shane seconded. Let me see your hands if you're in favor. And it passes unanimously and we will go in at table ten.
Thanks for coming, everyone.
Everybody.
Andy can stay. And I would like you here just in case.
We'll be checking to see if you are here.
Yeah, all right, yeah. We'll see you guys out in public, yeah.
I want to see those.
This is our city council meeting.
The mayor of the meeting is calling.
Yes, he's our mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Allen, hi.
Hi, Tom.
Hello, everybody.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
I won't say anything substantive yet, don't worry.
And come back. So we've got to go back for how many minutes? 10?
No.
10 minutes? That'd be fine.
Remember you have the other item there.
Yes. We have one more item.
We should do more than 10 minutes. Maybe, I don't, I don't know what the next item is.
We can ask that for time.
10 and a time.
Okay, 10 minutes.
Need a motion second to extend?
Um, who's moving?
Motion to extend 10 more minutes, executive session.
Second.
Hey, moved by Travis, seconded by Shane, all in favor? We are going back for 10 minutes of, uh, 842 because it takes a minute to stop. I would.
I move to adjourn.
Second. By Sharon, all in favor?
Thank you, everybody. And thank you for making a decision tonight or providing us direction tonight.
Yes, leave your papers, leave your papers.
Wait, this is where my wife, when she was.